That's what it is.
Feels like a surgeon.
Do you have a matcha shirt?
Yeah.
Yes.
So.
You're like.
Yeah. About.
So.
I think this January, it was like.
Oh, how difficult it really is. Like, you said, oh, we'll get that because after the holidays, they like remember junior stuff.
I didn't. I'm not just like stay. Yeah, I couldn't believe I could work over there. Like through all of it after.
Um, yeah. I would say. Bubble. Say, really, I took the day after Christmas, the day after New Year's, and I was, no, it's otherwise.
Yeah. I feel like usually about five times.
Oh.
This is not me speaking.
Thought like that, we're supposed to catch up, right? And I was like, yeah.
December before Washington.
I don't know what part.
As I say, I don't want to like say this anymore. I think I will be on you. Just having a tutorial lecture. Like, actually, you're already done. That's what I'm using our phone.
Yeah.
All right. I will call this meeting your order at six thirty. Uh, will the secretary take your role, please?
For trustee Bloom. Here. Trustee Trump, who did care. See, perhaps he's here, trustee boss.
Yes, remote remotely.
Trustee now, who is?
Here.
Trustee Rogers.
Here.
Trustee.
Yeah.
Here, because of the here. This is the.
This is the.
And I own one. Yeah.
All right. Uh, is there a motion to allow trustee boss to participate remotely? Moved by my, is there a second, second by Virginia? Oh, any discussion here in now, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye. You were now approved. Super, super.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. Approval of minutes, we have two sets of minutes, one from December nineteenth and the second from January eleventh. Uh, are there any uh corrections that need to be made? Any adjustments that anyone sees that they need to make?
I understand.
Okay, is there a motion to approve? So moved by my ring list, there's a same by Christina. And any further discussion here in the now, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye. Any extensions? The minutes are approved. Uh, public comments. I received, wow, I cannot believe there was anyone signed in for. There's a good idea, just to make sure I don't take it, I, I, I need earlier than that, see anyone?
No.
Okay. I didn't receive one email of, of something to be read for public comment today. But nothing beyond the form, I did not get, did you get any emails? Here, over our library board members. I am writing to ask why a day of celebration of Palestine culture was not sponsored by the library. Though this was the original plan and why it was temporarily removed from the calendar. As I'm sure you are aware, we are living in a time of historic Islamophobia and anti-Arab racism in the United States. I am forty-three years old and white, anti. And what? And, uh, I'm sorry. And I'm forty-three years old and while anti-Arab racism has always been palpable, I have never experienced such an intense period of bigotry and hatred. And the present, where people are regularly saying outright racist. Things to and around me to the point it is causing significant daily stress. Still, I'm more fortunate than many Arab people. I know personally who have experienced frightening situations. They have fear for their personal safety. Care, Council on American Islamic Relations has reported an unprecedented number of. Were reports and this hatred comes at a time as many Palestinian Americans. Wait for daily phone calls to verify their family's well-being and learn if they are alive and, and uninjured. While expected to combat bigotry and negative stereotypes in my daily life, I did not expect this from my community library. In December twenty twenty-three, the Park Public Library had not one but three Jewish cultural events fully sponsored and advertised by the library. I understand that this is also a time of increased antisemitism and very strong support having such events. That they are important and beneficial to the community. What I don't understand is why combating antisemitism is more important than combating Islamophobia and anti-Arab racism. I don't understand why some people's pain is worth more than others. I also don't understand why some people's heritage, which everyone is born into and no one chooses, is worthy of celebration while others is not. An estimated four hundred and fifty adults attended. The event despite not a word of advertisement from the Park Public Library. This shows there is real need for something to mention on our, I don't understand why the library was unable to see that. I attached some articles on Islamophobia and anti-Arab racism to help the board understand what some of us are living with. Sincerely, Leila, uh, Masu. That was the only public comment I received. Uh, trustee comments and calendar. Uh, we.
And we're gonna have some discussion about the event during.
Uh, we can have that during, uh, the justice report.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I noticed, I noticed on the calendar that there is no board meeting in July.
We should have one in July.
Well, I want to say thanks to, but it's gonna sound sarcastic, right? Sorry, that's one from you, didn't have time.
That would be the twenty-third, that was July.
Yeah, it was about.
That's. Let me, let me, I look, I look what you think.
That you were going to break me. I also.
And then as soon as one is sent to me, she has been baking all this corn. Um, I will be happy to make one of the days.
I've gotten so fat.
So, um. We have that, we have it in front of us, like. Don't know that we need to vote on that, so I think we just need to post it. So we'll include the July dates and. And then state that these are, are meet, are scheduled meeting, regular meeting dates. Um, of course, these do not preempt us from having special meetings or committee meetings, should that need arise.
I noticed the uh November meeting is the twenty-sixth. Which will be two days before Thanksgiving, do we have to adjust that now or will it go closer to time?
I think, I think that's probably a fair. To move that up to the, to the twentieth. Um, given. Given that. So. Get. Get too far into people's. What will probably already be in this week. And of course, you know, the, the summer, you know, the summer meeting, we have often, often canceled for variety of reasons, just. Lack of pertinent business to, to do, so. My, my mental load on that one is always TV, you know? Um, but we should, you know, at least have it out of books in case we do need it for some reason. All right, and then. We will, there's no other trustee comments. You can go into justice report.
Okay, thank you. I'm not really an actor, the discussion, so I just want to address this briefly. Just to clarify, I, I did not, I did not change it. It was changed the, um, from a community event, it was always originally in the calendar as a community event. A staff member changed it to be a library event. Um, because it was a sensitive event, I was paying attention to it. Um, I was watching for it, um, I consulted with staff in terms of making sure we have support available. Because anytime we have a large event or something, we make it's gonna be a large event, it's just prudent to do that. And so, um. So I just want to clarify that, first of all, I, I did not change it, I, I changed it back and it was changed without discussion with anyone. Um, and so we, we have some discussion coming up about, you know, the processes, because that, that is an issue. And, um. So for to be a community event, I'm really proud that we were able to provide so much support. Uh, we have provided additional IT support, uh, facilities before, I mean, supports. Also, um, public safety supports. Uh, as the person said, we have over forty-five people on here and so that was needed and I'm glad it was very successfully received. Without, there were no issues. We also expanded, um, how many, how many locations the movement. Maybe the event was able to have, so it was not only in the veterans room, the lobby, the lobby was engaged as well as the art. Um, art studio space right outside of. The veterans room. And so for this to be a community event, it was, uh, we provided unusual amount of support in terms of staff. There are also book displays, those of that nature, in support of the program. And so, um. In the future, uh, we, we've had, we have a transition, we had our person retire, who it was our deputy director. Who is in charge of public services, we have a new public services person, this. Thing that I caught that was changed happened in transition, uh, between when the person retired and when our new person started. And during the holidays, and so now that we have a new person in place, it's something that we're going to look at, so it's very, very clear. When something is a community event and what defines a library event. The ones that we referred to in the first weeks. Um, email, I would have to look back, uh, they, there's, you know, there, they could have been something that we were involved in. In terms of having it where we did the content and looked at like our goals and looked at, um, you know, who was going to come as our speakers or presenters. That's something that'd be, that would be a library event, sometimes we do work with partners in terms of putting those two things together and then it's a library event. But, um, this. I, I have, and I have in writing about. Um, the trajectory of the events, so from the organizers. They had the agenda already set and they also did their own advertising. So again, I just want to emphasize, this was a community event that we supported. Um, and it was, it was never a library event, it was changed. Um, I did not change it, um, and I kept it as a community event in closing, I just want to say in support. Of the person who was coordinator, who put in writing to me. That this Jocelyn, this is not a library event. So honoring the person who coordinated, I, in support of them saying that I asked for it to be changed back. So, um, that's what I have to say. Uh, to that, and like I said, uh, moving forward, this is an opportunity to. Get a better clarity for everyone's sake, um, so we don't have blurry lines between meeting events. And library led events, so. Is there, is there a time when we can expect to know the difference? Just because I would like to be able to explain this to folks when they come to us. Absolutely, we had a conversation about it today because of the, some of the fallout that has happened and the unclear. Incorrect information that's gone out, that the director is changing things and, um, I don't want them to have events and I'm anti this or that. Um, and so we had a conversation about that today and about moving forward, so I anticipate that'll be very soon. I would love to have it, perhaps maybe by the next time we meet for the next board meeting, because it needs to happen very soon, because. You know, I, I want to make it clear also, so.
Yeah, so I'm, uh, I just, I'm sorry to make you repeat yourself, but just to clarify, you're saying that. When the event was established, it was supposed to be a community event.
And it was in the calendar as such.
And it was in the calendar as such, and, and that gets established. How, like, is there an application for it to be a community event versus multiple?
And so from that, that was done and the person reached out. Now, the person coordinating was in and out for various reasons, personal reasons, so they weren't able to coordinate with them at first. So then they reached out to Lori, who's not here anymore, to say, you know, may I have also the. The art studio outside. You know, can I use this? How many chairs, questions like that, again, I'm, I'm happy to show you all the paper trail. And they also included their wonderful show. And their advertising that created, which they followed perfectly, so when you, when you reserve a meeting room, it tells you, if you're reserving this as a community member. Here's what you can expect, or one of the things it says is. You have to create your own advertising, so they also included those things which are already created. Um, though anybody from us. And so again, like, it was unusual how much support we had, so. To the contrary, it wasn't, we wanted to cancel, don't be here and don't do that, we provided extraordinary amount that we don't usually do. And we don't have the capacity to do for community programs. And I'm, I'm almost afraid that if we had advertised it, that room does not have the capacity for forty-five people. It looked beautiful, all the things that I saw and all the people that came, um, I'm glad we were able to stand it. But, you know, I, I think it'd be a different story if they had zero people come and somehow sabotaged that way, and that is not the case, so. And. I would. Would like to ask that when we hear where the dividing line is between library events and community events. That we also make a plan under. Our equity process, that if we are doing some items as library events. That we somehow reconcile. What groups in the community are being supported to the fullest extent of a library event versus a community event? I think a little bit of the frustration that I heard when I was here on Sunday was. That it didn't, it, it felt like a library event because it was in the library, to your point. It's all over the library, it was in a lot of different spaces, so it felt like it was a library event, but then it didn't have that scaffold behind it. So I, I would like that. When we're talking about where that dividing line is, if we'll also make sure. That if there is an ability to operate, right now you are doing a community event. Are you going to do a community event or are you going to do a, and make them, make, have people sort of affirm to us that they understand the difference? So that when they're interfacing with. Members of the community, not only we can know the difference, but we can, what you're saying right now is the people who are organizing understood the difference. I don't think everybody who was involved in organizing it understood the difference between the two, and that's where some of the frustration is coming. So if we can have a way, not all of that wins, but if we can have a way that. We make sure that there's a check and balance, you know, there's a difference between the two, there's a difference between the kind of support you will receive from either one. Are you really doing the thing that you think that you're doing or are you reserving this space in an attempt to have a library event? And make sure that they understand the difference between the two, so that if we come to a situation like this again, we can say that, no, this was explained to the organizers, they understood. I feel like that, that piece may have been missing in not communication with whoever planned it, obviously, but. In the greater communication. That's the plan, so really make it strong and put it in writing, so it can, you know, exactly what you said, so it's clear and we can point to it. We have some things already in place. Uh, like I said, when you make the reservation, it kind of outlines to you, it has at least five things. That say, already speak to that, but, um, you know, I, I feel like there is room to, you know, even when most we give it, like, there's something you can click on and. I almost envision like a chart that says library program versus, so I'm, I'm not saying that's how it's looking, I just, you know, it's just something I pray, I'm brainstorming. But it'll be a collaborative process when we come together and put it together, so the people who are in this space all the time. Um, will have a say in there too, so that, like I said, I want to bring that back next month, it's not something that, you know, I want to wait on. Because it is fuzzy sometimes, and I think it's just so, it, it's always gonna be, to an extent, there's always gonna be an assumption that it's a library program that goes at the library. And I think that, you know, I don't think, I know that's why some, something put on there makes that decision, like, don't expect advertising, you gotta do your own, and it says that. Um, but, you know, I, I feel like this is, you know, this is what comes from. Conflicts. Um, issues. Hopefully, you know, it becomes like a second start to learning how to do a better process, so I'm looking forward to that. And, you know, if it probably still will be confusion, but at the very least, um, it'd be great if we have something to point to. Internally and externally, and to make it clear, um. I mean, the silver lining on this is that we have such an engaged community that even community events. Look like library sponsored events because we're able to pull in that much support and participation and everything, but I, I think. You're right, if we have a better dividing line between what the two are and everybody feels that they understand what it is. You mitigate this. And if they don't, we can say, it's right here, so, you know, ask some questions and then it's clear, so I'm looking forward to that. Uh, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk about it, that the letter has provided, so you can discuss it and the photo form starts clear, and I just want to make it clear. You know, I, I do believe this is a library for everyone, I'm happy to have everyone here. Um, and, um, we were happy to support this, that would be successful, even though it was a community event. Um, in all the ways that I outlined. Um, people, so.
Is, so I think another thing I heard in that public comment though was the concern that there hasn't been, like, I mean, this is a community that is dealing with a lot of. Harm and trauma right now and are there any pragmatic decisions that might? Be community events offered by the library? Or whatever.
We have, we have done a number of, um. Have, have, if I'm not mistaken, we have, uh, done some sponsored events around, um, Muslim holidays, um. In the past, over the last several years. So.
Right, and then that would be like, you got the speaker, you know, the topics, so having that. Dividing line that we can, we can, um. Facilitate the process of what you're asking for, versus the person just coming in and we don't know what they're gonna present, so, you know, we, yeah, so.
My opinion, I think that's the thing, I think that, um, I, I know it's not our call at the board, but I wish that, like, you all, a lot of programmatic stuff can hear that public comment and maybe. Be influenced by it, because I, I agree, I, I think that's valid, like, I attended Sunday, I met people from a lot of surrounding centers, which was really cool, too, like. There is not a lot of place for people that are. In that population to connect and. Share their way right now, and so it was such a beautiful moment, I was, I, I was away for like forty minutes and it was still just very lovely, and so I, I guess. On the flip side, I would hope that we at the library can kind of provide us space as a sanctioned library program. But I know that's not our call, so I'm just saying, I hope that you all heard that public comment too and that.
Absolutely, that, what, what the community speaks about that's important to them, it does shape our program. Uh, I think we have a history of doing that and intentionality behind doing that, and we will continue to do that. Uh, and so, uh, we talk about Susie, not me, because the other thing is, I wouldn't even be in the conversation to give us a transition. We have the deputy director who does the public. Services and that department was involved as a manager. Um, and so, uh, we've heard it emphasized one more time, Christina, thank you. Uh, and we will, you know, use those factors, like that feedback, like you said, there was three. There was one, and there's always an opportunity to do that, but in, in this case, it just, it was already a community program that they had put together perfectly. Um, we were able to provide the free space, that's another thing that you don't get a lot of, especially to have three different spaces that would cost thousands of dollars. You try to do that, you'd have to plan it way, way in advance, just to secure it. Uh, and, you know, in terms of, we have full staff from all different departments, so, um, to facilitate, but absolutely, um. Heard, received, and that's something we can use to plan for what we do. Coming up, now later in the report, um, you'll see some discussion about, this is something that you, um, that you requested the last time we met, Virginia. About a breakdown, so I don't know if you all had a chance to look at that, um, and maybe we can further talk about that when we get to that part two. About how the program re-race works down in terms of.
Um, do we have a copy of that, um, of that email? Of the, what we're trying to.
I, I have a copy of that, I, I, I'm sure, oh, copy two, whatever, in terms of the board.
Okay, yeah.
Uh. Emails I got, okay.
Uh, so Christina, you said that, you know, the, obviously the programming part is not our job, but I was. Thinking the sense of his amen that was sent to the entire board and they were actually. Um, we may have gotten some more, we've gotten some more correspondence, I just. I'm, I, I would like for the board to respond to the emails that we've gotten, like, sometimes in the past, we have been there. Or we've been confused about what we can or cannot, or should or should not respond to, so, um. Can we have a discussion about like the best way to respond, I'm sorry to take over the executive director's board time, uh. Yeah. So, I mean, for instance, to the email, because I see that she already responded to another email that we got, but. Uh, Matt, so to the. I mean, what is an appropriate way to respond to? The public comment email. Like, what would we want to say? To let people know, as big as obviously part of the court is being invisible, rights? And I, I think that we could. Not rebound that by.
I feel like.
It's a P D A attachment.
Oh, no.
Oh, yeah, that's what I know, that's what I did last.
It came this night, it came in last night at about seven forty, it was sent to board at. Um, I was.
Who, you the?
Yeah.
Or the.
My, my, my intent was to respond to her and, and. And let her know that it was read and what I was gonna do tomorrow, once the, the video of the meeting is uploaded, so that I could also link. To that, so that if you wish to see that it was, that her words were reflected. That. It would, that it, they were.
Okay, I think it's important to just. Really hear them to say that if. I, as a board member, would like to say. That I don't believe that, that, um. Some people's pain is, is more, you know, more important than others, and I do feel like. Um, supporting. Palestinian people at this time is important for the library. Um. I'm trying to find where, what the other events were, because I do want to follow up and find out what the other events were and think about just how.
The three in December, you tell them.
Uh, if they were community events. Uh, the other thing is when we're talking about putting things on writing and making sure that there's this distinction. I don't, I would hate for that to break them. What this community is so amazing for, which is collaboration and. A sense of community, so just have thought about that, as that's getting kind of delineated and making sure that there's room for. That collaborative spirit and that community spirit, um, instead of like, that we're just. An agency offering free rooms, I don't know, I think there's something that, I think there's something in there that's, um. That, that is probably, you know, that I'm willing to just make, you know, make a comment, just.
Right, well, I'm happy to do that, that. To do exactly what you said is. And to make the collaboration, it's just to provide clarity, it's not to say, you know, we just use it and use rules that don't bother us. It's so, um, we have room to say, you know, like, if you want to do that, this is what it looks like to be a library led. Like, you know, we, we need to collaborate with you on, on a show, like, if we were, if you're on speaker, you know, there might be a call share, that kind of thing, so that way. Then it's very clear, uh, not to shut it down or not to just say, we're not, don't, we're not gonna touch it, but then, um, it seems like some of what was born out of this was. It seems like some of what was born out of this was the blurry lines, because it kind of looked like a duck and kind of like a duck. You see all the staff there, you see all the spaces, and so even on the staff side. Well, you know what, I'm just gonna hit this button, call the library program, and that that really was the plus of it, because then. Um, you know, it's changed, it makes people think it's not on the calendar what it was. It makes people feel a way about what I'm doing, about the staff doing, you know, then, you know, the board has, it makes it makes us. It doesn't help us look like we are, you know, a whole together team and are on the same page. We also don't value any other culture above another, we don't, we don't, um, you know, just followed by someone's pain or another as a staff. And so that's the intention of just having like the clarity of. He asked us to collaborate, but then, you know, here's what that looks like. When we don't collaborate in a short event, here's what that looks like. And then, you know, then there's questions around that that we can answer it, and then hopefully it's. You know, it doesn't have to be that, not we all, they could ask questions from there. That's the other thing.
Mm-hmm, no, the only reason that I was saying that, you know, just speaking to the.
Mm-hmm.
The letter is that I think when people make public comments and kind of especially something so heartfelt. And important at such a. Really critical time for our culture and and members of our community, I just feel like. We need to show that we actually heard that and the and speak. To that her point as well, if that makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that I wasn't saying that you don't feel that, I just was wanting to just address that and just speak as.
Yeah.
I really did, yeah, just to say, hey, thank you for. For raising this and having, taking the time, um, to 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 reach out and. Um, and ask and. And that we can learn from it and look forward, but, um, yeah, I just think. It is a really hard time and and how, um, some events are handled is is gonna be really critical.
I mean, I would I would hate for her to do even more work, but I was just wondering, um, Matt, what you would, what do you think about? At when you get back to it tomorrow, to mention that to be had this conversation, so she wanted.
I'll make sure that to mention that and say that you can see the seriousness of which. Though, you know, the board, you know, received your your letter by the discussion that followed, the public comment section.
Yeah, that we would of course imply in the conversation, any continuing conversation, I think that's true too, so.
I I would, I just want to say, like, one thing, I I completely hear what Susan's saying, I say that a lot of the current structure we have. Around. S- you know, what is a community event, what is a library event, what is a sponsored event? Came out of different groups in Over Park complaining that staff was picking favorites. With what they sponsored and what they collaborated with. And who they promoted through advertising and stuff like that, so there came, there was a time when we didn't work. And then a number of groups started complaining, well, how come we applied and didn't get picked? You know, who, who, why didn't, why were, why did they get picked or not, you know, why are you picking favorites? What are you doing? And then it became either it is something entirely led by staff.
Hmm.
Or it is a community event with a with a certain spirit.
And it's really benefit the vote, like.
Right, I just want, I just say, as we move forward in this discussion. There, there is value to collaborating with. With the, with groups in the community and and drawing from their their expertise and their experience and their voices. There are also risks and there are also, you know, there will also be criticisms from that.
Yeah, it feels like we made the law and you say we have this here. It feels like those changes were made and then we ended up with. Like the exact same issue on the upper end of the pendulum. And so like, right, we swing it back towards the middle, and I think Jocelyn's plan is. You know, if I if I'm envisioning it the way she is, which is when you ask for the space or you ask for our cooperation. Presenting all of the options, so you know what we're picking along this spectrum.
Yeah.
So that you don't feel like when you get to the end, because that I, because you can see why we did this, how, oh, we. We made the same problem again.
Yeah, because, I mean, clearly the the response to somebody's, you know, somebody coming to you saying, I don't feel hurt is not. Fine, we won't hear anything. Like, that's not, right, right, that's not what we want to do, like, it's, you know, obviously, the, as we've been learning. I think just around this board table, uh, for the last couple of years, it seems like, uh, it's. Clear that the more, more intentional we want to be about being inclusive. The harder it will get, because the.
Considering it's the new one.
Right, you know, more and more.
Right, I think, and so that's what I was trying to present, like, this is not a. Like, we've, we've, we've done this and our attempts to be nuanced with this still created. In incredible friction with certain groups in the village.
Hmm, yeah.
I mean, just, like, people were like, like yelling at staff about it. Because of like, you guys picked. And and I think it was a lot, a lot of it was about like two different film, attempted like small film festival things. One got picked to be sponsored and one didn't, and it was like a whole thing. And it was like, and that was, that was like the final straw that had staff just go. We're not gonna do that.
Do something.
It's either, it's either gonna be, you either remember it's your space and it's gonna be your thing, of course, it's gonna be ours, so it's like, that was. And there was a number of events that happened after that, but that was the final one that just had staff walk away. I think I I I entrusted Jocelyn and and the staff to come up with this plan, but definitely. We're gonna, I think you're absolutely right, we need, the board needs to have that, right, so we can respond.
Yeah.
To what the community members kind of tell us. And I think that we also. And it's one of those things where it's like, it's like, the organizers may sign off on it. But not everybody, like, I think to the point you're you were raising is like, not everybody involved with every step of the event that happened on Sunday. May have been.
The beginning of information for a lot of people came from us, it came from the library, and so to see the change in message. They weren't there at the genesis, they just see it going from a library event to a community event, but they don't understand.
Yeah, and then also.
Other days, like, we can't scoot forward what other people say, like, someone, like, I I didn't. I I just signed up my daughter's girl scout year for room reservations. And and so like we we reserve a room, but it doesn't stop me as a citizen from saying. This is a library sponsored girl scout meeting.
Well, yeah, but in this case, the manager, you know, like, always kind of like, well, this was specific.
Yes, that that happened, this is that, but going forward. This is also a thing that's happened in the past where people say they reserve a room and say, well, this is like a response to that. And this will happen again in the future, and it's also a part of this conversation, is. Unbeatable that when someone says it, even when it's not true.
Right, and I'm saying, I appreciate what you're saying, you know, and I and I appreciate the, like, we're identifying. The, we want to make sure that we're really clear about the absence. Of bad intentions. That said, I think that it's easier to be like, oh, it was just a mistake or a confusion. And to be able to hear that if you're in a position that's already secure versus if you're in a community that's feeling. Really on the spot and marginalized to be near it, and I and I don't think the answer to that is to say. Well, there's always those that we can do, like, and 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 of course, it's not an all much of saying. Right, right, like, the 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 idea that we will be clear moving forward, that's fantastic, I'm not actually worried about that. I I didn't, I of course, I wanted to make sure that as a board. Were giving the information so that we can speak to it directly and we respond respectfully. And like acknowledging, um.
But again, the other thing, just like a learn for the messages. And again, to Suzanne, I'll give you a check of the. Events in December actually were, but why, why weren't we? Do, like, why, why did it have to be brought by the community and it wasn't a library event? I feel like that's the undertone of. And why did we want to do this for ourselves? Why, why was there not somebody speaking up for it in our community library? Um, and so it wasn't just the the miscommunication that that. Possibly folks feel like they were left out of the planning, and I think. I think it was probably just it was already happening anyway, and we're probably not gonna put something bigger or more collaborative together. Outside of this group of people, but again, I think it caused, you know, I I think the question behind a little bit of what. This person is saying, again, a little bit of what I was saying it was, you know, why? Why was this not something that came from the library? Why, why are we the genesis of our own event? And and we're just using space, to Jocelyn's point, because that is the plan, but again, I think. That's what we need to address when we're, when talking back to this public comment is. The the anticipate, or the the feeling that maybe we were not anticipating this. Population needing our support.
Mm-hmm. And I and I do think that looking for, um. A collaborative feel and a sense of support from the Over Park community. Um, and the Over Park Library as kind of, in a lot of ways, heartbeat of the community, um. Is because this isn't a film festival, this is a festival celebrating a culture that is. Receiving threats and lots of negative press and needing a space. To feel this sense of celebration and sharing that with the community and that. So the need, the need for collaboration, the need for support is different than.
Mm-hmm.
Like a film festival, for instance, so I think that we just need to keep that in mind, um.
Well, hopefully, in our loss response to, um, it is emphasized that the support, the support was provided.
Mm-hmm.
In all the ways that they did not realize. And that, you know, sometimes we don't know about the ideas. Um, you know, to many of your points, we do listen to the community, sometimes the community drives what we do. And in this case, like you said, they already have some big advice, we realized it was big, because it it sounded, well, what I saw from the good emails. It originated at the school, so they have like a lot of speakers and all that in place. And so, you know, and we 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 chose to say, you know, aside from this, they were terrorists and not to be insensitive, here you go, do what you do. You know, we said, we, you know, we'll do it to place and, um. Other support things, we'll make sure we have a heads up, we have people on staff who can help. With facilitating as a big group and the the safety for the event, but it's not just because it's about sending a thing. Just like if it was in the clips or like, oh, okay, it was offered, it was gonna come, and we knew we're gonna be a whole bunch of people here. This is something that we, you know, we try to be proactive in providing, and so that was the intention, not to. Not to change it, not to, you know, mask it in some kind of way, but it 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 was a community event that they brought to us. Um, and internally is the issue, that it got changed without checking, without, for whatever reason. It got changed and it wasn't supposed to be, um, it probably didn't last that long. Um, I I like I said, I looked at it when it was in there, uh, to see that it was a community event, to verify, so. So I knew, I knew what it was and I knew exactly what it was changed. And, uh, about thirty seconds after that, I said, please, put that, what it was, to what it was. Heard the person organizing, not because Jocelyn said so, that was the person or it's. Wrote a letter to me and said, this is not a library sponsored event, this is a community event. Here's how we're gonna support it, so I'm also have a, you know, I also have obligations to support, somebody writes that to me. On this end and say, and not, you know, however, I don't want to change it, they told me that, they didn't agree. And so in support of what was written, that was my obligation to say, you know what? And when I asked him that, I said it to the manager, the, um, the leadership team member. The person, the person who changed it and and included the copy of the letter, so they would have context to why I was asking for it back. I think another thing that, and that's the issue, is if 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 it wasn't understood, and this is something we talked about today. As a staff, then they don't talk to their supervisor, to, you know, me, if there was an issue and not. Like, because I, staff also stirs up with the community because they feel a way, you know, even with that in there, and so we had a conversation about that too. Instead of doing that, we could talk internally, if you wanted to consider something else, or if it was. You know, another approach that we wanted to take, that should have been a conversation, so. Just so you're aware, that's something we talked about today too. Um, because that, you know, that adds to the confusion and what is your topic. So.
Matt, are you still good writing the?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well.
Should we clarify further enough to clarify whether or not these events were sponsored or not? I I I see.
I was, I was gonna, to our discussion, and I was gonna say that.
That's fair.
Secret lawyer.
There's, I don't think there's.
Yeah.
Fast.
Yeah, I don't, I. Yeah.
We also owe a portion of each one, like, sometimes organically, staff lets you gather, sometimes a community member comes and then we collaborate. And so it's not like.
Right.
Um, I'm, we're measuring this one versus this one.
Right.
It just comes together that way, but like, once we have a bearing on it, then people, maybe we'll be able to see that.
And I do see, and I'm, this is my, I found there are a lot of events that were not sponsored by the library and they were community events. And I don't know if that's what's being referred to or not, but I did a check at home, because I was curious.
Good. Let's. If we're ready, we can, uh, refer to the rest of your guys' role.
Okay, thank you, um. There's a lot that could be, and I won't really balance you all, so we can leave at some point before the sun comes up tomorrow.
Hmm.
But, um, I have, uh, I have a little report that, you know, to have, because we all kind of tapped out for various reasons. Um, and weren't able to have it before, I had a, um. A compilation of achievements, uh, goals, um, you know, things that happened that I did, so I, since I didn't see the latter day. I wanted to put it back in here, because it also went theatrically with the rest of my report, which is an overview of the last year. So if you, you know, if you want to take time to improve some of the things I included, I hope that you do take the time to look at them, um. And then I'll I'll skip the pop-up shot, just to go to what I'm talking about about the twenty twenty-three kind of overview. If you want to scroll to the, um, core use statistics and, um, kind of look at those. Just comparing year over year, how, and I think almost in every category, you definitely see increases from the web usage. To, um, checkouts, to, uh, visits, to live values, um, year over year, and even comparing with twenty twenty-one. Uh, which I think is great, and I think that is a testament to the work that we do every day, um, with the staff, um. And, um, how the community responds to that and uses and the access to our resources. Um. Previously, we, um, I think we're gonna, you were the one that said, you know what, can we get some summary of the program in addition?
Hmm.
So, uh, we work with Valerie and with, um, Julie, thank you both to those two, um. In compiling this and speaking to, hopefully speaking to what you asked for, so it's clear. And so what you have is twenty twenty-two's number of programs, you have twenty twenty-three's number of programs. Uh, and then if you keep scrolling, you have the attendance for both. Uh, you can see, and then you pass the notes, like the kind of suss out, like, why the numbers look the way they look. Um, so that's a broad overview, uh, another ask was, you know, how does this break down in terms of multicultural programming that staff has created? Um, and you can see, uh, how much we've increased just year over year, uh, month to month. And you can see the breakdown, um, of how things are marked as something that's a multicultural. Slash, um, equity slash anti-racism program, I think that's a good percentage, um, out of all my percentages. Uh, I, you know, um, I think it's somewhat reflective of the community, uh, in in thinking what we have to do. From babies to older adults, um, and we've definitely increased from what we have previously done. And that's from, you know, children to adults, to, you know, all different, um, so across the board, it's not any one. Area, um, you can see the babies, toddlers, preschool, elementary school, base school, high school, adults. Um, how that plays out in terms of what we do and what we have done for the year and how we've increased it year over year. So if there's any benchmark, you know, we can benchmark ourselves and see. How, you know, how, uh, much we've been intentional about increasing those programs, so they are reflective of the community diversity. Um, so, another, um, thing that was requested or asked, uh, do staff use their time?
Yes.
And so who, uh, ninety-eight percent of vacation is used, so as we said, the numbers will back up. The anecdotal things that we're saying, uh, for the health, you leave ninety-four percent is used. And for the school, it's probably ninety-six percent, so I I hope these numbers, um, assure you that the staff has access. And do utilize their time off.
I mean, come on, guys, we can get to a hundred percent. I mean, come on, guys, we can't get to a hundred percent.
I think this is a recommendation time, but this is like a, like there's a mull over in here, but, but yeah, another one.
Yeah.
Like the health leave includes the mental health leave, right? That, that hour.
Right.
As a posture.
Yeah, and, and, and help this may work out where did you?
You know what, we had it on the line. Sorry, I, I, if we don't jump into the conversation, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Um, I just want to clarify that health leave, health leave is one of those where there's not eighty-six hundred hours were awarded and over eight thousand hours were used equally by all employees. Um, health leave is one of those that rolls over indefinitely. So you may have employees that use none, that just, and it just rolled over. Some employees use more, but, but generally speaking, there were, yeah. Um, ninety-four percent of the hours are awarded that year were reduced. Just it's, it's just not a one for one. So I don't want you thinking like um all employees, all their health leave. Yeah, there may have been one employee who took a two-month health leave and you, you know, used um a number of hours, another two employees that didn't use any time. So I just, it's, it's kind of lumpy that way. But vacation and floating holiday are more true to, true to form. Very few people are, are leaving time on the table there.
That's a good thing.
What are your questions about? Are your votes?
I'm just prepared. I, I have two questions on the equity and anti-racism. Um, first, not to offend any of our constituents who might be watching, but what is considered an older adult?
Sixty plus.
Sixty plus, okay. Um, and then I know earlier this year, we made the move to anti-racism being the filter through which everything moves. So what is the rubric or what is the determination that moves a program to being in this nineteen point three percent? Um, is that just, is it a decision that we make? Would be that made based off of the programming or what department it comes out of or the subject matter? Like, how are we deciding what falls into?
Well, as I understand it, when, when they create the programming, then programming have, have tags. So if it's something that has anything that's, that has a multicultural component, or if it's a speaker that's speaking to any of those, and that's how Valerie's able to grab them and catch what they are. And, and that goes for any of the other things. Like that's how we know something's a baby. That's how we know something's a common program, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. Are there, like, are there certain criteria that something has to meet to be multicultural?
I, I don't think there's some firm criteria, but if it was something like, I know um that we had um some Native American events when it was Native American History Month. I'm sure that would definitely be tagged as multicultural. Um, you know, we have a speaker that uh has certain topics. That's something like we want to be sure that we're capturing, that staff is bringing to the table, if we'll call it, the same as babies, again, toddlers, older adults. Um, so we can capture that and we know, we can, and like I said, when you ask that, I'm glad you asked that because I don't know if we previously necessarily. Um.
No, I think it's a matching, yeah. I feel like before it was more like this department did it there more. And now that we're not doing things that way, I'm wondering, how do we move things into that pile? Like before, the pile was the department. Um, so that was, and then that's just sort of my question going back to twenty-two, like, right, things that happened in twenty-two that now we classify as multicultural events that we did back then.
No, not necessarily. I think, I think that was like my goal in really communicating out that it's, it's, it's a labyrinth wide thing. So it's not something new. If we, we had multicultural programming, not just last year. We had some last year as well. But um it, it is something that happens in the children's department, in the teen department, in the adult department, in older adults in terms of the programming that we put out to the community. And so like being able to look at it, you know, year over year is a start. Um, and that can inform us like, okay, what else can we do? How else can we, could the goal be now that we have this, could it be like, can we get it close to match, like almost like close to matching the diversity of the community? Like, the diversity community is higher than this, but you know, if, I think a lot of benchmarks, a lot of libraries of our size, we probably look pretty good. Um, so I almost feel like we're, we're our own benchmark and from like looking at what we, what we were doing last year and how much it has increased across the board and not just in one department. It gives us like a roadmap, a roadmap to what we can do next and how we can be even more intentional. Um, and you know, make sure it's even, make sure we're not doing, you know, like we have nothing with babies or nothing in the older adults. Like, so it gives us, so again, I thank you for asking that question. Uh, I thought it, you know, would be a helpful tool for us, especially as we have a new deputy director. It gives her kind of a thing to kind of look at with her team and say, okay, let's look back. Um, and that's something we, we have to just do as people who work in the library, who are always doing, doing, doing. And you know, like, sometimes you gotta take a reader and say, okay, what did we do? Um, you know, what can we do more of? What do we do less of? How's the um, the service, et cetera? So.
No, I definitely, I definitely love seeing that whole age and especially seeing the jump between twenty-two and twenty-three. Um, my, my staff's brain is just going, well, what else happened in twenty-two? There was, there's something else that should have been in that. I would, and we can't go back and like retroactively reclassify things.
So was the Mallory gave, Mallory gave, um, Mallory and Jody gave you some context to this? And there were some um LGBTQIA programs that were then put in because we changed the tag from we expanded it to include equity and anti-racism. So then any um programs that Shelley does in youth, you know, um those kind of um supported programs were included in there and some of the rainbow programs were included in there. So that it became broader in the scope instead of just anti-racism. It just became. Yeah. And then the multicultural piece in there. So that's what they were trying to, um, the other thing she wanted to point out was that we just did more programs in twenty twenty-three than we did in twenty-two.
Yeah.
So that is also accounting for that jump.
Wait, so I mean, to uh, I, are we saying that the ones that are being counted or have been tagged as the equity and racism and multicultural programs from twenty twenty-two did not include our LGBTQIA programming?
I don't believe so, because at that point it was um just anti-racism.
Because we had the anti-racism department and we had the rainbow library was kind of separate, but then, like I said, now that the lens is over all of the pillars, we're gonna have more things that follow to this category. So I think part of the jump is just more things in twenty twenty-three, all my, your definition.
I just feel like then this, um, then the purple page is a little bit misleading because we're preparing let's say apples to oranges. Is there like a pressure we can say like, I, I feel like that it's, did you know what I mean?
I'm sure that it is, but it's a start. So we, we, we had an intro for a really long time as far as why to. Um, you know, we did, so now we have people in place, but I, I would say back to the absolute piece of it too, where you know, you maybe didn't have a direction to even be paying attention to how we do this.
Yeah.
We did put that lens on there, but if remember, we, that came in September. So this, this happened before, even us putting that little arrow on it. But that didn't happen until September in this for this year. And so, you know, once you know, people are in place, you know, Lori's job is different. I think that kind of, you know, that kind of informs maybe being more like, okay, twenty twenty-three, it even had it in how we had it, even thinking about that. So to your point, perhaps next year, now that we have that whole, that what we're twenty twenty-three, we'll have more apples to apples.
And twenty twenty-two, a good chunk of twenty twenty-two was just getting ramped up post-COVID. To see like, are the people willing to come back to the building? Do we want to put resources into in-person programming?
Yeah.
Because we didn't want to like put a bunch of resources into a program that no one could show up to because everyone has to be six feet apart. So we'll, we'll, you can just beginning of the year numbers, which is like a good chunk. And then you run into yeah, we were out of COVID, let me see. So, you know, I can see how the, the.
Everybody, everybody, right? So it's like, yeah, there's a lot of that. I mean, it's.
I, I'm, I'm just talking about, I, I think Jocelyn understood what I'm saying. But originally, I'm just talking about the reporting, which is that if we compared the twenty-eight with the six, it implies that it is like we're really expanding in our program in this area when it's that we're classifying things differently so that so it just seems like.
I think we're classifying things differently, but also the twenty-two numbers were post-pandemic. So.
Both to watch out for sure. But then that's, that's where you, right, that's where you, you, you use the program events to to calibrate that, but.
And to your point, like I said, maybe probably twenty twenty-four, now that we established what Suzie said, that we improve that as we should.
Yeah.
Um, then it'll be like, then we can, we'll really be able to see, but it's a start, like in terms of, I'm glad we have a look at. And to keep pushing towards the goal. And we can really see where they, all the, the work of the programming falls to. And that's good for Suzie. And um, you know, so she knows, again, so like we have a whole bunch in one and not a lot in another bucket. Um, you know, across the board, because it's everyone's job to be looking at this and be intentional about our programming. So that is reflected. So, um, yeah, I, I appreciate that point. Like, it may be skewed a little bit, but like we'll have more accurate apples to apples. I like apples to apples.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome. So overall, I think, you know, it's very, you know, positive news. Uh, there's nothing, you know, and I'm glad that Ray would say that. All libraries, again, I say this all the time. All libraries are not able to say that. Some are still struggling and trying to figure out some are basic cuts because like we really, you know, I feel like we really justify, you know, what we asked for in terms of the increase. Um, you know, the stacking and how, um, the, the money that we put into things because the, you know, the stats bear that out. You know, we have over a million visitors a year, we check out. Um, the wifi use, the digital use is, you know, through the roof. So, um, it's reflected in the data here.
Do we have your, like, community stuff? There was like now a thing about community versus library. Did you, did there any filtering that happened with that or no? Was that?
Well, well, maybe like the meeting will use, will tell the story because then it's whatever meeting it is, that's the, that's the stat. So that is there. I think it's one of those pillars about the media use.
Yeah.
So that will tell the story of, you know, and that's always hot because we can never, we can almost make a whole library of media rooms and have people check work out. They'll give me ideas.
And I could never check not successful.
From, from Friday during the conference, I was like, staff, print it up. I'm really appreciative because when it didn't show, I'd be able to take their spot. Yeah, it's like, I, I wish, I know that probably not possible because then the community would have to like report out and that's not gonna happen, but it is like, I wish we could know like how many of them, just.
But there, there are used for so many different things that I feel like is like, you know.
I was gonna say, the girls' cause to what we had here on Sunday.
It shows like how many classes were, like, I mean, they're, yeah.
Yeah, but it did, yes.
Like, we're not like selling all of the goodness we do almost, I guess.
But I think, I think we can say.
There was something like.
You have free, you have free, you know, space that is freely available for kids, you know, for people to reserve their study and that, or meeting rooms that are reserved for, are these hours in there that are orders engagements of like in the meeting room used in twenty twenty-three. One thousand seven hundred forty-one reservations of meeting rooms in the Oak Park Public Library. Like, where, where are you gonna find free rooms to, to meet no matter what your station is?
A lot of the meeting, book of the study.
Yeah, the study is, yes, is over eighty-eight hundred and after this year and was like not a big jump from twenty twenty, twenty, you know, from twenty twenty-two.
It's hard to jump from like a hundred percent capacity to a hundred percent capacity. I did get only.
You're just not.
We did as part of like a revamp of the master of this. I think that's the only other point because there's a new study catalog. I think that is why we made it crazy.
We have four, I think we have four now that we did will be over.
But like, I think where you're at, like, is that part of like, yeah, we, that's definitely gonna be the pipeline for what we need. Because like I said, we have a library of views.
They're really.
Actually, that'd be awesome.
People are finding out because they've been really familiar. I have so many more people learning how to, I mean, I, that's how I, I mean, I'm probably like five or five of those eight, they.
Right. And then one other thing, just if you want to look at that promoter score outwardly, um, it's, it's, it's still very high. So you know, the F P S score can range from a hu- negative a hundred to a hundred. A positive score um is good, above fifty is excellent, and above seventy is considered world class, or eighty-seven point seven. Um, so again, that speaks to, you know, what people think about our library, how they use it, um, they appreciate it. You know, they appreciate the service that and the work that we do. So we also track that. We also pay attention to that and, you know, make sure that that's high. Um, it's staying pretty consistent year over year. Uh, we're well beyond excellent even, so.
So Joc, Jocelyn, I've got two questions about uh your executive report. One, thank you so much. I watched the video of civic engagement in uncivil times from July. It was wonderful. And thank you so much for that. And I noticed that you have your sorority sweater on during the whole event. Alpha. Yes.
Okay, well, thank you. I'm glad they, I didn't know you were there. So I'm glad I didn't say anything great. Thank you.
I think you got to be watching.
Oh, you went to your, well, that's, I, thank you for watching it. I appreciate it.
The second point was, um, when you had the uh invited by Kevin Jackson about the eighty percent um increase. How did that go with council? Cause I, I was not at that meeting.
I think that, I think that's, you can probably find that reported too, but Matt was there, uh, some of the staff came too. I mean, that, what did you think?
I think, no, I would say, yeah. Well, I think, I think Jocelyn did a nice little job of walking through the, the village board through content of which they suddenly decided to have an interest in. Um, um, that, you know, will occasionally happen. So she answered, uh, she answered their questions. I think she answered them in the, not always, I think, in the spirit which, in which they were asked, but in what it was best serving the public in sharing information.
This makes so much sense.
That was well praised, Matt. Um, so any other, any other questions for, I move on to the pop-up shop really briefly. All right. Well, thank you for taking that ride with me through those stats and um just some of the highlights. Um, the pop-up shop, um, Jody has been working with me on this and I appreciated her kind of then um them compiling what we've been doing. So I, I think, like I said, you've seen the advertisements, you've seen the social media posts. Um, we talked about revenue generating. So this was our, uh, one of our first four ways into like something beyond the book sale in a while. Not the first ever, but in a while to do something a little different in terms of like what, what would that look like? So um, we use a fraction of some of the funds that we've had donated to us directly to the library. Um, so we didn't use tax credit funds. So just, there's only one way to, you know, you just gotta do it to see what sells, what doesn't, um, what moves, what, you know, what people like. And so, um, we spent about sixteen thousand dollars um, on total on everything. We had fourteen different items from book bags to sweatshirts, to t-shirts, to mugs, um. Uh, onesies for the baby, uh, hats and scarves. So I had a variety of items. And so we had a pop-up from like the, right after Thanksgiving, right after um that Thanksgiving holiday on the second week, um, and we extended it to January. So when this was captured, it was at eight thousand, so a little over ten thousand, you feel me, right?
Um, you're correct, around nine thousand.
Oh, around nine thousand. But for a short period of time, I was really excited about that. Um, so it's been about, you know, from November until the end of January is maybe sixty days plus to raise eight thousand dollars that quickly. Um, and then we learned a lot um about like what we can buy next time. Uh, because I didn't know how to sell this. When, when, if you saw it, so what is that?
Mugs.
The mugs, for sure.
They're so cute.
Yeah, yeah. And, and that also told us, so some of the things we learned, some takeaways, like the mugs. Um, you know, that price point was about ten, twelve dollars, I think, whereas sweatshirts were forty-five or forty. Um, people did buy them. Some of them did sell out. And so we got bored about colors. The gray ones, people don't like so much, but the blue ones, um, especially since like Amy Poehler had it on, that was gone. Yeah, and she wore it again and she gave it back. The green one, um, you know, those, uh, you know, and the sizes, what sizes should we get? You know, I, I told Jody, I think we are a bit less, I know I like to be less, you know, let's not give any kind of sizes. Um, you know, make sure we don't know, um, but you know, just all that stuff. We also learned how to use, um, like, uh, we got a, um a scanner, like a square scanner, like checkout machine, which also was able to track and give us you know, so like every week Billy sends Jody and I like a tracker of all his toys. And so that's the two. So from after the thirty-first, um, we're gonna try online sales. So what, what are the things that are left? We'll go to online and see what we can do. We have feedback. Some people were saying. We're gonna try online sales. So what what are things that are left? We'll go to online and see what we can do. We have feedback. Some people were saying. You know, I know Lick already worried, do you have online sales? And so, uh, with the inventory, we'll we'll do that with what's remaining. We've often also had an opportunity to not have to go buy more promotional things. And just have it on hand. So like, you know, when Amy Fuller was here, like the whole team got a shirt. We didn't have to buy tchotchkes and they said they love wearing it. We got home, my wife took my shirt from me. Every time I go out, when I was at the airport, people were saying, yeah, oh, park. Um, uh, for Stevens event, you know, we were able to give some of the speakers like a shirt. Again, it's not something we had to go buy again. So there's like multiple uses for it, um, and and not having to dip into. Like our budget budget, like to use this. So, you know, even if we don't sell, now opportunity to use it in other ways. It doesn't expire, you know, it's, you know, I know, I tell them it's not cheese. It's not eggs. This is a sweatshirt. So you can you can stay, you know, it might be, you know, from the friends meeting last night, they said, you know, can we have some things for our animal prize if you have a. Sure. And so, um, so the next pop-up, just wrap that up, uh, and I can pause if we have any questions. The next thought is to have one to coincide with like summer reading and. Uh, not to do so many items. So that's what we learned. We kept getting such good ideas, we kept adding, but we we we. Figure for what we learned. We keep it tight, maybe five new things, maybe a new bag, and keep it at like a twenty five, twenty dollar price point. Um, you know, we can, cause everything is marked up at least to the cost of the item. So that's the goal, like. To the cost of it over. So like we make it back and then some, um, what the charges are. So. Um, that's what we have to be our next one. So it's wrapping up the end of this month. Um, so that has been. But then it'll go online. So if you didn't catch it, but I mean, you're here.
This is Ted, um, again, um, thinking about community events and using the lobby to make money. Um, I was a little concerned the other day when I was in the lobby and Creepy Coffee. Was offering coffee there. They had like a little pop-up stand. And you could buy a cup of coffee for three dollars. And I thought, wait a minute, this, where did this come from?
Well, thank you for mentioning that, Ted. That I, you know, I didn't have a report on that, but yeah, that is also something that we started. Um, as you may know or may not know, we used to have a coffee shop where the idea box was. So. We have a precedent for having a retail space in the space. And again, in the conversation about generating revenue. Like I'm in in working with community partners and working with minority owned businesses. Um, that's some having them have a pop-up is like a tiptoe into what may be possible for the future. Um, so they come, uh, you know, whether he he said, like, he said he doesn't, if I would love a day, Creepy, we could have a Creepy in here. He has said, like, I don't want the idea box space back to make that retail. He was like, I want the model that I've seen, like I said, Charles from the library Geneva. Um, uh, what's the one that starts with the, what are you, what are you, the, we? Hours. It's on the floor, um, it's on the floor, like in embedded in the staff. And then. To do a different model than we did back in the day, we had what we can revenue share. What what they sell in some kind of way. Not saying you take fifty percent of it, of course not, but like if it's three percent, if it's five percent, it's it's certain days. And then again, with the goal of creating a foundation where we can receive these funds, so we have that extra. So that's where that's going from Ted. That that's a pop-up. That's our foray into doing that. So right now, we don't, we don't get any, um. We don't get any profit from it. He said he makes some money from these. So he has a pop-up at Rush. And he has a pop at at Four Spark Library. He does it there too. So, you know, just in terms of a precedent, like Four Spark also has some coming. And so it's just, it's a promotional opportunity for him at this point. And then, like I said, uh, hopefully down the line, it can turn into something else. But then, much like the pop-up shop, this is like, like just to stick stick a toe in. Eighty steps.
I know the the pop-up, like our own materials, we have, um, that whole process, but are there. Liabilities or questions or things that we need to take into account when we're inviting another business to come into our space and and. Run their business from our space? Would I like if somebody spills their coffee and slips and falls? Or burns their mouth on their coffee? I don't know. At at this point, I can't think that far. But like, if we're inviting somebody else in to do business in our space. Are there things that we need to take into account? I'm also trying to, I'm also thinking like, we are a space that does not. Charge for being here. And I know this will be different, just like the pop-up. This is. You're not required to do these things, but I really thought about putting you in a space where it doesn't feel like you have to pass in front of this thing that you paid for. In order to come into the library so that it doesn't feel like you're moving into. A a third space that requires payment to be in.
Do you feel like it feels that way?
I wasn't here when the when the.
They come every Thursday.
Okay.
They come every Thursday. So they're here one day from um ten to two.
Eleven three.
Eleven three, thank you. Eleven three. Um, and so what I used, uh, um, again, we, I know we, I was here when we had a uh a coffee shop. And so like, I feel like. It it's not like I'm entering such a new territory. I'm like returning to it. So if it was okay, when we had it then. I'm just repeating in the way of a pop-up shop on one day, going back to that. And so. I I don't know. I think you were here when we had the pop-up shop. I don't, I don't know how you gauge that. That's right, right, when you come in the door. Uh, it's still a space that you don't have to spend money. You know, so many people walk past them and don't stop. And you don't have to. We have a vending machines also. You don't have to buy anything from the vending machine.
Right. Those are, those are like tucked away, not by the door, though.
Right. I mean, um, that's something that the pop-up shop can tell us. So sure, that's something we can talk about. Um, in terms of moving it somewhere else. Absolutely.
In the lobby?
It's, yeah, it's on Thursday, right in the corner, like on the on the left side, when you walk in.
Okay.
Um, we have a refrigerator. The other thing is, he brings a refrigerator to items too, so that kind of plays a part. We also don't want to be at the weight. Um.
There's so many little taxes to like electricity.
Right. And so there's a little space there. So that plays into it too. So they can sell things. So, you know, uh, he's happy with it so far. Um, for my kind of core days with them. They seem to be happy with the arrangement. Again, I I think it's a good message that we're supporting small businesses in area that we're supporting minority business. Um, I'm pretty active with the chamber in terms of being in the community and doing that. And so it's it's been a positive so far. So. Um, you know, hopefully we can do more and make it so it isn't a sad spot. But I want a piece of that action that I told him that it's not, I I want to do a different model where we had somebody. Just here and, um, you know, he's actually walked the coffee shop that used to be here. And so for 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 Creepy, I feel like it could be stronger. Like they're not dependent on us to make it. And that's a lot of times when cafes fail and libraries like. If they open up one more Creepy, they'll be Starbucks in a minute. Like there's, he's doing great, you know, it's it. So, yeah. I'm excited that we can help support that maybe. And they feel pretty positive about it too. I don't know where it's gonna look like. We're not there yet. With the pop-ups going pretty good. So thank you for asking that. I didn't, I didn't mention the pop-up, the pop-up shop.
So Virginia, to to your question about liability, uh, when there was a coffee shop in what is now the Idea Box. Um, there were legal issues that happened, uh, that the board had to deal with years ago. So it is a problem.
Well, it wasn't related. It was related to like. employment concept, wasn't it?
It was, it was related to the behavior of the. Of the of the person of who ran, who ran this space. It wasn't, it wasn't a slip and fall thing. It was. Right. It wasn't, it wasn't like an accident. It was related to the actions of an individual towards another individual. That we were, that the library was attached to illegal proceedings, which as they proceeded. The judge took a sound of it, and the worst of my son, because there was your right people, that we were not in fact. Why responsible for the actions that we did? So.
Thanks for bringing that up, Ted, because that's, that's more my brainstorm. That was before my time, if you remember. There was a coffee shop and then every time we mentioned it, people would make that. So, yeah.
I I think there is a balance strike and I like with the. Making fun, extra funds and balancing a pretty welcoming, non-monetary space. But that's how I think it'd be really cool if you brought some materials to like the bookmobile for block parties. I think. People have money at block parties and are drinking and I wanna. I mean, I do their contention for sure. And I think people really seem to love this stuff. Like I think it's been fun to see people on the street wearing their things and. So.
And that was the motivation. Like I love the same thing. Like people we love and people also ask, they ask us, how can we support the library? And so now we have some tangible things that they can do. Um, and so, yeah, it's it's seeing the leap you see positively. And there is precedent in libraries. We do, you know, one thing, one exit presentation that one of the um village trustees made, made a point for me. They don't charge fees for anything. You know, they're asking for this, but we can feed it up and keep it, we keep it. And we can't do that. And so, um. You know, with this and with the, um, you know, the E V charging, if you recall, if we're doing that, that has a little demon, like, you know, libraries. It's a reality that, you know, libraries do do this. There it is precedent to it. And it's not meant to be, you know, gross or like, you know, like. Tacky or anything. It's just, we we have to, we have to do a little something more than just take tasks all the time. We've got to have a B back. You know, that's part of why I was invited there. Um, and I shared it with them, like, okay, we're gonna be looking at revenue and creating things and more to come. Hopefully we can do passports. Yeah, I would love if we could do that. I worked at libraries and did that. I think a hundred thousand dollars a year is just from the passports.
I brought that with some people. I mean, some people are really excited about.
Yeah. And also, um, the new one that's new to me is to to do the little sticker on your car. That's something one of us can do. I was wishing you had that, but I have to look at mine in November.
Yeah.
And you can just give it right in the library and you get a little piece of that. So it's little subtle things we can do. Okay, uh, we did do fast advertising. It wasn't the most subtle thing, but you also can have to sell it so people know. But, you know, it's it's just that, so yes.
Yeah, I would keep that.
That was all somebody on your screen. Yeah.
Did you?
One, one last question, Charlie. Um. Hello, are we copying you in any space that I'm there? But are we considering anything other than coffee? So I now you got my brain moving. I'm looking at what's in the pop-up shop. I have to be some, I have a dress shirts in June. Right. So you're probably making, so are we thinking about changing other vendors? From, or are we just gonna have an odd?
I mean, I love that. I mean, it's possible. And that the possible, the pop-up gives us that flexibility. So it's more that, you know, that I think that would be great if we have, I know they have some food items, like they have some paths. But I mean, absolutely, that's something we can consider. And that flexibility gives it, so I don't know, sometimes we might, nobody wants coffee. So that might, to your point, that might be a good thing to think about, like, you know, maybe ice cream comes instead. Not, you know, who knows? So anything is possible, um, in terms. And then it only helps us to build that community and have people in the space on the on the business side too. So I think, um, especially supporting the small businesses that we can communicate out that we're a partner in that, you know, that's a great idea.
Especially like that, it's a local business. They're exactly doing a pre.
Exactly, yeah. So we're gonna have a little nasty coffee in the in that, um, the vending. That tastes like, I don't know, you're in the. From the eighties. And, um, you know, instead of doing that, we have a local business. I'm a minority owned business at that, um. Then it's working in partnership with the center. It's excited about that. And what the future they hope, like he's even, like I said, he gave me ideas. And he was like, I don't want to be out there. Like, I want to be in here. And so, yeah, you know, I didn't even see, you know, like how some places have dual restaurants next to it. Who else? Who else? I don't know, you know, so. All right, that report was way, way too long. I think I hung on a base.
Um, and we have our staff came to report.
Yes. I mean, what, okay, so, um, you've already heard from Suzie. I love her. Started this at during, it was the mic. We have a new deputy director. Suzie Wong. She started, um, shortly, we have just a more business, right? So, um, yeah, as you know, Lori retired. And so, um, Suzie, uh, we we did interviews. And so we wouldn't have a gap. Suzie was also here for, um, a little time before Lori left, so it was able to be some transition and. Like, um, Lori can share some of her institutional knowledge and can ask questions, each other, contact information, etc. So it was intentionally planned with some of that. Um, and so we wouldn't have a gap because that role was so important. Because, I mean, deputy director, um, you know, the. The top hierarchy of what they're in charge of is the biggest in terms of the public spaces that you got. Everybody on children's services, just, um, you know, patient services, we created studio, which is under, um, adult services, et cetera, et cetera. So. Um, she's doing a great job. I'm happy that she's here. Um. Yeah, let's see, yours, my one I was supposed to, um. The other highlights, I think there was one more retired out there. Uh, Pedro also, um, retired. Um, he was a long time facilities member, um, that retired. So you see that on there, um. And then everything else, some temporary people, um, have gone, um, so. You know, any question about any of the ones that you see?
I had, I had two questions. Um, one is just curious. We changed the title from I T specialist to system support specialist. Is that from any reorganizing? Cause I I also saw there's like some part of I'm going to full time. Like is there, are we?
Asha, you want to speak to it?
Yes, please.
Remember, we're going to start a finance course.
Yes.
On social market.
Yeah. Um, I just wanted to mention that when talking about retirements, uh, Debbie Rafine also retired through her time, through retirements in December. Debbie Rafine, a longtime employee in the, uh. Or what you. Yeah, the, yeah, the, yeah, collection services. They're they're a team. Um, so Virginia, can you ask your question again?
Oh, just I saw there was a title change from I T specialist to system support specialist.
It was just a clarification of of a, um, the. She, I T specialist being like just more general and, um, uh, Jack was taking on. Um, you might notice that we have some MacBooks and we have, um, whatever the Dell laptops have a varying degree of, um. Technical expertise that's required. Jack was taking on more responsibility, like managing the MacBook, um, piece of it. And we just wanted to make sure we. Had a job description and a job title reflected some of the duties that he was taking on separate from the I T specialist.
Um, my other question was, what changes about Jody's job or is it?
Yes, um, that, so in conjunction with all that we just talked about, about development, um. You know, we need, um, a dedicated person to that, um, to speak to like getting a, um. Foundation started and getting more of the development and, um, having legacy getting set up and that kind of thing. So a lot of that is, so Jody was, um, really instrumental in the pop-up and doing some of these things that we've been doing. And a lot of, um, development that rests in marketing and communication as well. And so, um. Because we don't have it all scaled up, uh, I, you know, I would love to hire a hundred thousand dollar another person. We don't have the space nor the capacity to do that. And so, um, since Julie, Jody had taken on those things, um. That was added to the scope of, um, her focus. So in addition, um, to that, because, you know, she's also gonna do communications. She'll have a, um, a consultant to as support who is a fundraiser, who's a local fundraiser. Her name is Ashley. I have her last name, excuse me, spell, I think I have it. Um, and she she's a consultant. He is in the fundraiser space. So she can inform us about like how do you cultivate? We were for a foundation board, like how do you have these events? Um, and so that I think that gives us the right. Like manpower or people power for now, until we, you know, maybe get to another space where we fundraise so much that I can like take it out of that. And fund that person, but like this is a good start. And so with that intentionality behind, like, being more intentional about us. We can revenue building, we need somebody like working at that who is doing that. So that, that was not a bad change we made.
Where did develop, like who did development live with prior to that?
And I I've got to say, I'd love to have one, but you know, that's another, that's another leadership team number. That's another expense. We, you know, we don't want to keep, you know, and we don't have the capacity, you know, it doesn't exist really right now. So this is a effort to start that. And like I said, she's, she took on some of those pieces before it was her title. And so that's an acknowledgement of that. And then also an acknowledgement that we need, you know, like we need a developer piece. We're gonna talk about being serious about. You know, doing that revenue side and looking at all the possibilities. Um, we we got another relation, as a matter of fact, from Sony again, without cultivating. So imagine if we really had a dedicated marketing thing about, you know, here's what you can do to lead your business to get. You know, so that kind of thing. Um, and Jody already does a really good job of marketing and writing up, you know, from 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 programs to a lot of things. So. I, you know, I thought about marrying the two together and that's what I did.
Can I, can I, sorry, no, this is Ted. Can I.
Can I, can I circle that? Sorry, no, this is Ted. Can I circle back to Lori Pulliam and her retirement? Um, I hope that uh we can find some formal way to congratulate her. I mean, she was the interim director between David and Jocelyn. And, you know, she really did help to kind of weave between you, Jocelyn, and David. And she's uh has done a wonderful job, and I think, is there some way that the board can can uh formally say? Thank you, Lori, on her retirement?
I think so, but I I have a lady, I I think I was only the other, uh, the current vice president.
Thank you.
I was gonna add, oh, cause I think this came up to another original thing of the founding, the founding. But like, can you speak to how it would pass as friends, or the totally, like, would there be some relationship there?
Well, I I.
Yes, and yes, there is something that was gonna be come on in the progress report later.
Well, the idea to answer your question is, I I see the message different, because the first focus is the book selling, they do a great job of that.
Yeah.
But like, how they participate in fundraising, like, is pretty limited to that by choice. And then the the foundation piece gives us a place where people keep giving us, like, this is gifts and stuff like that. Um, it gives us, like, if somebody wants to do that, it gives us a place to put that.
Yeah.
And then it gives, uh, creates an opportunity for community members to be a part of. You know, talking about how we like do spend the extra piece, it keeps it out of our general, because everything was just those in the bucket, we do track it, but. You know, so that's the difference between the two, so what I'm doing now is supporting um members. Uh, I need to react to, and then having the additional, um, having the additional support of having Jody have that focus. And having that consultant will get us there, so that's one of the things um planning for twenty twenty four to get that proper running. So that was the thought behind it, not to not to replace friends. Cause what they, and and a lot of libraries do have friends in foundations, so, yeah. Um, and because we don't wanna make the friends do, like, that's just not, that has not been there. For a way that they decided, okay, I'm gonna have a, I'm gonna have a fundraising event, or like a certain scene, I don't know, they don't do that. But fundraising, we can do events where we, you know, have ads in libraries, you know, our. And in Chicago Public, that's one of the things when um Jody was, we did things like that, like we went to. Like Chicago, if you live in Chicago Public, they have a really active foundation, like it's like millions of dollars. Now they have crits curves and stuff on their report. Uh, and you know, like for the Johnson Rice and stuff like that, but what we took on that, not not that. But like they had, you know, like that, we went to a whiskey and taco night.
Yeah.
Those things really don't go together, but I mean, it was, it was really cool, like forty five bucks. And so what they did, well, you know, like they had the, like the restaurant, like, like spotted them a lot of days, they made them nice money, and then. Like each table, they had somebody talking to us about the library. So um, you know, that was really an active supporter and all that stuff, so.
Yeah.
Um, it's those kind of things I'm hoping for on the foundation side of things, that is different from the first.
Okay, that's not, I'm just, you know, light it or, I don't know.
And I have a similar, yeah, the the um worst conservative side of the foundation. And I do, I have a whole reputation for that, so it's not springing on the, they don't wear.
Sure, as a, as a, as a, as a foundation, yeah.
And that's why I want to happen too, because it's like, why are we missing out, and libraries have one, so. I know, like, I feel like the, I don't know, the all around or the the narrative is, no, you didn't know, that's why, no, no. And why not, people already give it to us anyway, why not, if we could be really like, put a mark on and be like intentional about doing it? And people ask, and we like, we don't have that habit in real people to put it in, that's official, so. Um, I I feel like, you know, it's hard for us to have one, we used, we used to have one. I saw you at that again at the one twenty anniversary, and we just started talking, he said, it's so funny, Jocelyn. We used to have a foundation and now a friend, and then it became a price.
No.
And so we do have a fish one for the time, so. So we get back to that.
I have um a couple questions about the um development, the, just wondering kind of. What the upfront costs are for getting this going in terms of the consultant and the um increase in pay? Just to get a sense of like what, where we're starting in terms of expenses and where we need to to be to to make that.
Well, with that in mind, that doing it this way was trying to like lower the expenses. Like I really would like to hire supply, that's a hundred thousand dollars, I can't do that, but um. So we're part of that race for Jody, and just just to add, um. LT across the board was always raised to a benchmark of. A certain amount, and so from there, you know, varying degrees based on what they did, they have different ranges, but they're all at a base amount. And so where that came from was, I used to have, I used to have an amount for the director for special projects. That was like thirty five thousand dollars or something, so what I did was, I said, I don't, I don't need that much. Uh, give me like twelve or six, so I used that money to to fund those two things and also the. The raise across the board for the LTT. So that's when that, that's when.
He's starting up somewhere.
I had a earmark spot that is called like special projects, and it was for the director, like if something comes up at the end of the year or something you wanna do. I can do, it was like thirty, it was thirty five, twenty five, it was.
I don't, I don't quote me, it it was something over twenty thousand, and it was reduced in this, in this, in this budget.
And so it was increased because I use that to to fund that raise. To get that, you know, that's part of the twenty thousand person, and then to make the raises across the board, so. Um, I don't know if that actually questions about where that came from, how we're funding it.
No, I wasn't asking how how funding going to go, what the um dollar amount is in terms of like getting the, the.
Well, the person, so the person will be about twenty thousand for the, um, and so that's a consultant rate, so we're not paying their I R F. Without paying benefits, so again, that's the savings, and I think it's appropriate to the level where we're at, which is the ground floor.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, cause you know, also don't want somebody sitting here, and nor do we think we can attract somebody at another fifty thousand dollar range for all someone to have to do. Um, so this way is the consultant, so we get half of us, we beat them, and then they get actual, like, eat the nuggets. And then, you know, it's good for the part-time person, it's good for us. And then, um, I don't know, I don't know what to tell you about what Jody's base was, and I don't know.
I was just in a sense of like, you know, starting in the real development areas, but.
But the upfront is, right. In terms of salaries or in terms of everything?
I don't, I don't know that the individual salaries is appropriate discussion.
Well, I wasn't trying to ask them, I'm just sorry, I'm trying to figure out what the upfront.
Suzanne, Suzanne, years ago, when David Selleb was director, we gave him a small, like. Discretionary amount, I think it was three thousand.
This isn't that.
Oh, i- isn't that, okay.
Yeah, this isn't that.
Oh, so like developments, we're starting in the development area.
Well, I would say everybody, so all of the mission team have budgets. So maybe that could answer your question, like, what is, what hasn't been increased on that level, would that speak to what you're asking?
Like going from communications between divisions and development?
Right, would that answer your question?
So, so I think, I think, in my understanding, Jocelyn, that what you're saying is. The upfront cost for this development project is the consultant plus Jody's rates.
Plus her raise, but Jody, that department also has shitty budgets, so maybe if if I'm drilling down. To answer accurately what you're asking, would that address what you're asking?
I'm just trying to know, like. Where, when that starts, the development?
Twenty twenty two.
Start then getting, when it starts? Like what are we even is the most, yes, when are they breaking, they're gonna be, I don't think we need a number, I think what we're looking at is. When would we, when would we expect to break even between the investment in this new? Project endeavor.
Um, essentially, the costs that we're earning right now are the consultant fees, the consulting fees to get to get this going. Looking at probably less than twenty thousand dollars a uh a year.
Yeah.
Um, and, yeah, I mean, I I view it growing into like adding actual people into like, we we budgeted for a. For, I think it was like a fifty thousand dollar position for for um this year, and we decided not to fill that position right away. Rather work with a consultant to more assess our needs before jumping in too far.
So then we would have the twenty thousand for the consultant and then thirty thousand for whatever facility.
If we decide to hire later in the year is something we might be able to do, and then also, um, you know, looking at, yeah, in twenty twenty five, maybe adding in that position. Uh, where is this going? What do we need in order to see, in order to see this be successful? Um, I have talked about this, that we're, you know, gonna do this incrementally. We're gonna, we're 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 not, we're not gonna try to relax before we can walk, and we're gonna crawl, right now we're crawling before we can, before we can walk, so.
Not even at the break even, like, we didn't even start yet, so, because we don't have people in place.
Mm-hmm.
I I think maybe I we could better answer that question, see, like, Billy is also adding to, I was like, 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 helping every year. Uh, like, we've already done the pop-up, made about eight thousand in a really short amount of time, you know, do another pop-up and try to do four of those. Yeah, we're believing that's coming from, you know, the electric charging potentially, if we explore the passport, so. I think I'll have a better answer, like, when we get this uploaded for the year, and then to look back at what we added to Jody's position to to make.
Yeah, Billy will be on time, that's good, um, yeah. The um, the top of that, the eight thousand is gross, so that's not that, right?
Right, but then also we're not using any funds for our budget, so there were um funds that were. We beat us, and it was a really small piece of that, and so that one, and so again, that one isn't really trying to be cool, we're trying to find out. Like what works, what doesn't, so that eight thousand, we just go to the back into the pop-up. And then just keep like recycling it, and so we, you know, we get a nice fix, and then, you know, we can get some study, but like, we're, it's such an infancy stage. Because, you know, like, we haven't tried it in this summer, so, um, if I I can have a, I have a better gauge of how it all shook out. Now that we have somebody in place dedicated, and have um, we have a consultant, and then we put some of these things in place to really like do an app on, like to return other vessels.
So I think it's smart to do it um incrementally, and I think it's smart to do the. The um twenty K consultants, so.
That's great, I do, because it would be hard to attract the person to, like, they're gonna, it's like, it's like a higher thing that we can actually pay. And we don't wanna, you know, we don't want somebody who just started, like, okay, I'll take that. Uh, you know, this person is seasoned, you know, maybe, you know, they're like a mom, and they're worth our time. Like, it works for her schedule, it works for us, and she has the experience, and she lives in town, so she has connections in town, she has a connection, you know, she loves libraries. User and all that stuff, so I'm excited about with her to see where, you know, where we can get with this.
That's great, man.
We're ready then?
I was still in me, I don't know.
Yeah, I think so, I think we can go on the financial.
I'm trying to wrap this.
Okay. Um. At three months' worth. And unless anyone has any specific questions or objections, I would just like to this kind of skip to the year end. And just, and just focus on the, on the year-end report? That's okay, just know that there's three different resolutions for the cashless placement, but but, but yeah, I mean, really, there's no sense talking much about October's report. Cause we also don't include any December's report in there as well, that's a more important one. Which I'm trying to get to that, several pages down. Or one thirteen?
Thank you.
There we go, hundred percent of the year. And I think that's our only job.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, there there's some good news in here, I don't, you won't be waiting for Jocelyn to return, yeah, yeah, for sure.
You said that like we were not expecting the year to conclude, like, it's been a week, it's over there.
Like, the last four years.
I was really excited, but it's like, we need a. Sorry, the rally now where I work is Q four is gonna Q four, and we're still gonna fall out from that, so.
You're not gonna just say, uh, exit in the sun?
We'll handle it January second.
Okay.
So. Um, uh, the, I'm sorry, I I even, so since we have three months' worth, if you can just focus on year-end reports?
Sure, yeah, that's okay.
Yeah, one thirteen, so Jocelyn, yeah, one thirteen.
All right, that, it's good.
Yeah, I I think, I mean, there's a lot of good news here, like the mon- the money that we were expecting to come in, um, the tax, um, property tax. Revenue we were expecting to come in in December, did come in in December, and started flowing in November, and it started in December. Um, so, I mean, we received more, well, way over one hundred percent of the um budget that we, that we, um, I'm sorry, budgeted. Tax revenue that we expected to receive, but there's an asterisk on this, though, I mean, if you're going to. I won't look at it quite yet, but I mean, there's, there's an asterisk, and it's explained in the first paragraph, page one thirteen, um. There's money that we received in twenty twenty three, um, property tax revenue that we should have received in twenty twenty two. So on, on like these financial reports you seen in front of you, it's, it shows that the money we received in twenty twenty three. But in audited financial reports, you're gonna see that that money we received in twenty twenty three is gonna be moved to twenty twenty two. Because we didn't receive it what we should have in twenty twenty two. Um, so like, the numbers look good, they are good, it's just they're not as good as the audited, the audited financials. Um, but they're, they're not as good as the audited financials will show, you know, or. The. The audited financials will be more accurate, and they'll show where the revenue actually came in at, so rather than showing it all come in this year. So that's, that's one thing that really I think is, we're sticking out here, um.
What will, what will? What will twenty twenty two look like?
Twenty twenty two, with the audited financials, once this money, because it was booked in there, and like, we, we, like. It will look more accurate, like the money that we're supposed to receive in twenty twenty two that we didn't, now will be, now will be there.
But I mean, will that look like? I mean, I I guess I'm right here about it, because it's, uh, if I understand this correctly, it seems that beyond, not beyond, but um. Even after the, it's been corrected, we're still at a hundred and nine percent of of budget?
Yes.
Right, and so where did we land ultimately with twenty two, do we know?
I don't have that in front of me, but yeah, less, um, yeah, I think, I think the property tax was, I don't even wanna take a guess, but I get. It was not at a hundred percent, it was, it was less than that, and this happens every year, it just happened more dramatically from twenty twenty two. Yeah, but but this happens, like, it'll happen, like, right now in January, we're receiving money we should have received in twenty twenty three. It's gonna show up on next month's, you know, um, uh, yeah, next month's report. But when we do um go through the audit, they they'll, even though we received those funds in January twenty twenty four, they'll book them for twenty twenty three. Yeah, I think it was, this happens every, every year, because people pay their property taxes late, and it just happens. But it happens, we'll receive in twenty twenty four, things from twenty twenty two or twenty one even, um, like, people that finally pay their tax bills from pre- previous years. But, um. It's the late due day, it was more pronounced. Yep.
Were there any, were there any budgetary decisions we've made for twenty twenty? Or, I'm sorry, I'm getting me, so, would would the the twenty twenty two tax year not be at a hundred percent have influenced any of the?
No, we were counting on receiving that money, it's just, it was a timing thing.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, if I remember correctly, Jeremy had a few things, like he had sort of put people together. Should we, should we have needed it, but none of that, none of that manifested, the need not manifest, so there was not any. You know, but because a lot of, a lot of the big ticket items get paid before the end of the year, so it's, it was.
And I know we had, we had operated that year under the assumption, and eventually we see a hundred percent, we have opened, see, you know, we can cover.
So.
That until we do get it, I just wanted to make sure, and then. In lieu of that, we didn't, we didn't look at something in one of these meetings, though, and we're a little bit low, and and make a decision based off of that.
Yeah, the, so these reports are like reportedly what what actually uh happened, but it was not, you're not seeing in here, and and maybe. Um, it's not seen exactly as how much cash we actually have on hand, um, so you can, you, it is operating cash available. Um, uh, that number fluctuates throughout the year as we spend money and as more money comes in. Um, and also something new that we're starting, that Linda and I are, Linda are um. Uh, finance and accounting manager, what we're working on is doing uh cash flow forecasting in addition to these reports, to make sure we have the cash on hand. Um, and that's an interesting exercise, I don't know, the last time that's been done at the library here, so it's a very interesting exercise, exercise to make sure you have the cash on hand to be able. Pay all your bills each month, yeah. So, we're, we're, we are, um, I should say, we, and Linda is on it, and she is looking at these reports, and 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 she's communicating with me, and and. This is actually working out really well over the last six months, um, the relationship that uh we've, we've built in the renewed focus on the financials. That we're able to to bring. That we're able to, to bring.
Any other questions around financials?
Yes, I do, um, how do we make twenty-six thousand dollars in parking?
Yeah.
Because people are using the parking, like, hey, come to that, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's something that we've been tracking throughout the year, um, uh, you know. Pre-pand- like, we're, we're, we're at, we're receiving parking lot revenue, uh, at rates of pre-pand- pre-pandemic levels. Um, during the pandemic, we, 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 like, we, you know, something we just let open, essentially, like, this, this, like, the gates open. We're seeing that return, and we've been tracking how, like, that's been gone, gone up incorrectly. And, uh, but the, the downside of that is that the more the parking lot gets used, the more money we make, but the more money that we need to put into the parking lots for upkeep. So it, it costs just about as much money, uh, to upkeep as it does to.
So we're not making.
I mean, make, make, I mean, is it a revenue generator? Yeah, I, perhaps slightly, but, but there is a lot of work that needs to be done to maintain that.
More release targets, the more maintenance required, so more changes we need, and the more tickets we need to buy, something of it all.
Second question, second question, why are digital books so much more expensive than physical books? We, we have, like, okay. Oh, no. No, but I'm just looking at, I'm looking at the, the financials and thinking about that.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question, but we got experts in the room to solve it.
All right, so, um, if there's nothing else about the financial reports, is there. A motion to approve the resolution of disbarment as far as October, November, and December cumulatively?
Summer.
February, January, second. Bye, just got it, all right, any further discussion? Here we go, who's a bigger say I? Those are approved, um, let's go on to additional reports, I go.
We, we, um, mostly met about, um, discussing what people envisioned the possibilities for IGO. Were, were rethinking IGO, and it was a really wonderful, uh, conversation. Christina, um, Whiteboarded, and I have, um, fielded questions, and, um, people participated, and I, I were both feeling. More optimistic about, um, the potential drive. What we can do. And that's, that's really, is the main, just. But very obvious.
All right. Good. Uh, how are you about meat? Uh, plan agree?
Um, I offer this to Matt.
Now, do you have anything, um, to offer? Uh, you are muted, uh. We, we will, we will come back if, if he speaks out, um, speaks out. Um, friends of the library.
Okay, so we have the, um, we have our first meeting of the year yesterday, and, um. I, I had, so, I had a conversation also, because prior to the year end, there was a question about, do you give any there? Are, you know, uh, anything, so I was like, you know, we don't, we get there, we just put in our logs. So, uh, someone actually did try to give us some money, and they tried to give it to their friends, and they were told. The five-one secret is not active, and so, uh, I reached out to Ansible, and, um, it was. Discovered that we haven't filed taxes since twenty nineteen.
Was it, was it not USB?
Oh, the, the, the friends of the library have not filed, thank you. Is that, I, I don't wanna be responsible for anything else, because, yes, so friends of the library that have not filed. For various reasons, I, I, I don't know, um, but once you hit three years, you're not. You, it's rescinded, your five-one seat, it's rescinded, um, you know, I started November twenty-two, I, you know, I would have no idea, so. Um, there, there is a two-part thing, you also have to file, you know, you're just like, you have to do your taxes, you gotta do, although you gotta do federal. And so, um, there was an opportunity to turn that in, but it's actually been rescinded since May twenty twenty-three. So it was rescinded last year, um, but it, it came to light when somebody tried to give this money, we did get the money, by the way. We have it, but, um, so, there was a conversation about that, about how to fix that, I mean, you can, you can reapply, but then you go on the line again. Um, you know, it's a process to do again, um, but, uh, we also have a drop dead of, like, November twenty twenty-four, I, I. From what I gathered, from what the, our, our council told us, then it is just gone, I, I hopefully won't take that long. But the other challenge that came up too was, in March, there's an election for officers, and, you know, Ross did say, you know, I really would, you know, I'm. You know, I'm older adults as we categorize them here, and, you know, I'd like to take care of, I'd like to go off. Um, and, and some other people said, I am coming off war officers, and so, um. Uh, there aren't any takers up as of this time, and so, you know, they, they have some work to do between now and March. To see, like, where this is gonna go, and so, just getting back to your question, Christina.
Yeah.
About, you know, the, the, my goal was not to not have gold, but, you know, I did offer them. You know, perhaps they could be a, a committee, you know, if their focus is just to book. Store, I mean, I mean, the book sale, um, you know, they, we do have active people to do that, you know, but you don't need a, you don't need a officer for the. Secretary or Vice President, and you have to file taxes and all that stuff, um. But I just wondered that, I didn't even, that, you know, they, I don't, I don't want them to feel away, but I just was throwing out suggestions. Um, as far as, like, what they could do, if, if they don't have retakers, because, um, per their bylaws, it's time to let people in March.
Yeah.
Uh, and I don't know, if, you know, uh, they seem not to be struggling with, like, the transition to the next step, or to have the succession plan. Um, you know, I hope they are successful, we'll see, um, in terms of that, and, um, the person who is the treasurer said they're gonna look into it, and counted. Ansible can do it for us, um, there was some reticence, you know, and that answer is not cheap. But, you know, they, they are aware of it, and they offered to go ahead and file those, and it is always pretty expensive if you haven't done it since that long. Um, yeah, uh, you know, I came from a library that had files since twenty nineteen when I got there, which is literally against the law. But, uh, what I learned from that is, it's very costly, we have to go backwards, and they have to file, so. Um, you know, they should be prepared for that too, so, I don't like to be the mayor who had news, I didn't, you know, I asked Matt. He's like, you gotta share, so this is, this was across a, a lot of what we were talking about, and I want you all to be aware. So you're not surprised, something happens on the line, but, you know, hopefully this has a different ending, but, you know.
Looks like an opportunity to, to people listening, wanna get involved, and, but I, I mean, when I was on Friends, there seemed to be some new. Newer members that were interested in stepping up, so hopefully. Actually, that was something from IGO, I forgot, I, I need to email you, definitely, but, uh, we're trying to get a sense of, like, all the different committees that exist. And all the different governing bodies, so I'll, I'll not do some really about it, just about, like, how the community member can get involved. Um, so let's go to the area of that news.
Do we know how long the process is for the friends to get their status back? Like, if you, you made a mention of having to get back in line, but then there was, like, a November date, and then.
Yes, so let me clarify, so. In sharing that, that was from the council that I've been working with to do the foundation, like, what I need to do, that's why I reached out to her, to her, it was Erin. And so, her parents, like, commented on it, she said, just like I told you, in a foundation, there's a line. Like, they're backlogged to, like, twenty twenty-two, um, when I first started that, like, so look at applications for twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
And so she said, that's remains true for this, and too, now that's not to say that they can't operate. But it just will take a while to, like, be official, official, and so she shared that with me to share with them, that, you know, the process is already backlogged. I'm sure you all see other news, like, the IRS is, like, they, they have a third people of, and lots of vacancies, and they're short of that, so. Um, that's, but, me saying that came from errors like that, so, I don't know what the venue was on it, and she said, just be aware that it's, it's.
And so, and so, and it sounded like there is a path to reactivate versus starting from scratch.
Is that the November versus that align conversation, okay, so we have until November, it's a little residency, that right front.
And after that, I hope they know the thing that that law, but that, you know, I did share with them, that it has to be done, because at November fourteen, that's fifteen months. Or something like that, from being totally inactive, and then it kicks in.
And then you have to start, yeah, scratch, okay.
So, um, you know, like I said, I don't, like, again.
They are, so they, but, they operate, they, you know. They were, they were, like, it, it's, like, I think there's a lot of, a lot of people, you know, over here, it's like, well, for the library, it's okay, well, no, it's the friends. We benefited from it financially, once they donate money to us from those jerseys, but it is their, like. Yeah, and that is, and that is why I hope, I, I reminded Jocelyn to say, like, this is not a we. You know, like, and, and like, it's like, we have an interest in their success and their continuation. But it is, again, like, we're not, we're, we're not, we're not responsible. Like, we're not, we're not solely responsible for it, and I don't want us to take our responsibility in fixing this, you're right.
Well, I hope it doesn't sound like something we.
I don't think we can.
All we have, as, as a look is available, so they would have to, like, engage, yeah.
But we have our own tax and status, we have our, so we, we can't be in two places at once to, to. And we, particularly being, um, like, there's, yeah, there has to be separate, um, but in terms of us being. Interested in their ongoing, yes, they can, they do run the book there, and they do.
Right, you want to be successful, you know.
Yeah, yeah, in terms of that, you know, I know that, um, um, at events that I've been at, either. When I was, um, on the board before, before, when I was appointed, and I hadn't been elected yet, and that, when I was running for office, I was going to events, and. A lot of people would come up to me and say, so how can we get engaged, and how can we get involved, and it was a lot of older adults. Who have been really engaged in the community and looking for ways, and they said, we don't have the time to be on the board, but is there something else we can do? And I had mentioned friends, so, um, there might be people out there that are interested, and I'm just wondering if there's anything. That can be done from a communication standpoint, to just. Share the information of the possibility of looking for new officers, nothing about any of the rest of it, but, um. And, uh, you know, while still keeping it a separate.
Right, what's so frustrating, and I, I'm not saying, it was, it was so frustrating, is this, they have a list. They have a list of people who have signed up, and who have been members, or who have stopped being members, and they have many others. Done it, like, work to keep that list active or engaged. I'm happy, like, if we can find a way to do that communication. We can, I like, I, I had that screen, it's like, it's one of these, it's like, I know repetitive, I've been a member, my membership lasted, and I forgot. They never tried to reengage me to be a member again. And so it's like, it's like, we can do that, but at, at a certain point, we can't.
As I say, that are keeping it active, but we can't own that piece anymore, we have to make sure. No, no, I'm just wondering, you know, if there can be just something in one of the news, just saying, hey, friends are looking for new.
And we talked about this, you know, we said, you know, just happy to, to be a Joey's, put a message out, and we said that, um, so, yeah.
Just because I have heard that, like, it's.
Yeah, that's right.
I've, I've had that conversation with plenty of people too over the years.
But then even going back to the foundation, those are friends, that, that's, that's also motivation. Because I feel like the foundation side would be more of that active, it's, it's just how our friends are taken out, that's not true of all friends. But they do really well on the book sale, and that's good, and I think, you know, from what you guys said, that's. They just, they don't activate other, I, I feel like, well, they didn't have those events, I, I don't know if it's especially to be a fundraising event. And it, and it really isn't, it's like a social event to engage in that way, and so, like, I, you know, I feel like that's a missed opportunity, honestly. But, you know, I also realize, you know, just a year in, it's changed, like, that's just not where they live, and so. That's also making us miss opportunities that we could be doing in terms of doing other fundraising activities. And it's for whatever reason, it's just not the jam, I, it's not what they do, I, I don't know.
Yeah, they should have, or their friends. They were, they were friends.
Okay.
In the praise.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, anybody else, like, they were saying, we needed friends, would have been sent in to, yeah.
Yeah, definitely engage them, they're right. But in the fundraising part, it's like, I usually get on that part.
There, there's, in, in fundraising, you say, you know, friend racing events, you know, con racing events, and I think it's very. It's very telling that they are the friends of the open library, and I think that's why I really appreciate your vision. Uh, I don't know if I've been vocal enough about it, but I, I, there are pitfalls and pros and cons to go over, but I do appreciate that vision. Of figuring out how we get this library, all of the support that's needed, and I think if. Everything works out, and the friends can get a little bit of help, and we can raise those friends to our fund, so it'd be really lovely.
I have nothing else, maybe I'll, you know, like, I don't think wanna do.
Takes a lot of that, takes a lot of that. Work, um, to, to focus on the thing that they wanna go as far as.
Obviously, there's a cost to getting that, yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I think a lot of the scary legal paperwork for a lot of people, it's like, oh, do I have to do it, and then whose hot potato is it? It can be really bad, and lawyers are termites, you know, and me. Yeah, yeah, I would explain so much. Volunteers, like, the volunteers to get, the, the, the whole library stuff, yeah. And when I was doing fundraising all the time, it was like, every, every friend group we had, they needed the support of a actual staff. Member who was doing that, I like, was doing all of that stuff, because otherwise. And so the fact that, there were, I mean, this is horrible, but that is really great, because I've seen it so much.
So we have, uh, are we ready to go on to the staff, the staff presentation on the yellow resources? While they get a position.
You can raise your hand if. Say it was thirsty, it was a long meeting. Say, you went somewhere. It got thirsty. I hope that you couldn't have car ride, what? I had my work laptop on the kitchen table the other day, can I tell you how fast I flew across the kitchen as I'm walking my seven-year-old, with the giant, with a picture? And he's like, I'm just gonna like, I know you did, buddy, I know you did, you did, you did a great job, and I like, had to go pass out.
But is it good?
No, it didn't, it was a great job, didn't get any of the work, didn't get any of my work done.
Yeah, I hope that's not contagious too, because we all, I, everyone where I work, works remote. I had three people sold coffee on their laptops on the same day. Yes, and they all worked, or well, not, not from, but like, they all worked in separate pages, easy ones, so it's like. How did you do that? Y'all don't have a coffee, there, there's no beer, what's nature, well, like, we were remote. And yet somehow we all, like, had been in a Teams meeting, and then we all just transmitted to each other, like, oh, my.
More than yawns are contagious, because.
I shouldn't yawn at my own question. No, they're great. I mean, we have this for the weather, so like. Ah, we have society.
Yeah. Oh, wait. It's a much stronger. Stampede.
It's not your presentation. And you're right, it was brilliant and it was fantastic and you should be committed for every bit of work that went into it.
You would be.
No, online, they're coming. Uh, yeah. It is.
Alright. What was people turning up instead?
Well, thank you. Yes, so Lee Terulo, Director of Collections, Barbara Fitzgerald, Manager of Collection Services. Um, so this presentation is going to touch on some of the um answers to the questions you've been having about um the. Up to in interest in digital collections and how that impacts our materials budget. So um as you can see in the graphs, um interest in digital collections um has been trending upward. Material resource trend that all public libraries are seeing, especially um since COVID is. During COVID, when buildings were closed, um more patrons were accessing digital materials. Well, now that buildings are open and we're kind of open um at full steam, that has not decreased. Um, people like the speed and the ease of using e-resources and so. Uh, in our uh curation efforts for our collections, we have to keep this in mind, that there's a balance between print. And digital and keeping in mind that uh digital is getting more and more popular. So like I said, you can see the trends are going uh up. Uh, what we we have been paying attention to with that usage stat is how do you balance what you spend on print materials as opposed to e-resources? With the price of e-resources also increasing. Um, so in our uh efforts to create a diverse and inclusive collection, um we are mindful that we like to follow a hybrid usage model. Robust print, robust digital and robust non-traditional collections like the Library of Things collection uh that we have just debuted. So all of these uh efforts, uh it challenges the budget a little bit. Um, we wanna be responsive to our community's interest and demand for both print and digital materials, but we are aware uh digital resources are more expensive than print. So you can see for a physical book is about fifteen dollars, well, a digital book is about fifty-two dollars. Um, so we have to keep that in mind. We also have to keep in mind uh the growing demand for non-traditional items. Library of Things has turned out to be super popular. Um, those things aren't cheap. Um, and we wanna make sure that we are constantly adding and changing that collection to meet uh customer demand. Um, so with all of those things in mind, uh we really do have to pay attention to our materials budgets and how that impacts that. Barbara's gonna, a little bit about um budget allocation strategy and how we manage that.
So that's the exciting part of collections. We are curating a diverse and inclusive collection, but we're also. Looking at how our community is using our collections and then allocating different areas in the budget and we have controls over that. We're not, um, it's not spiraling out of control. We feel. Really good about it. Uh, the way we do that is we leverage our consortium agreements. Um, that means um like we're in Swan. For our physical, we are in uh for our overdrive, we're in media on demand, but we also have the ability to. There's these partnerships, but we also have partnerships beyond resource sharing in our purchasing agreements. We can use both Riles and Swan. Uh, to lessen our costs, so they go in and they talk to a vendor and they create an agreement, so because we're in these. Consortium agreements, we can buy things at a lowered cost, so we're constantly leveraging that. Um, but we're also. Negotiating with our vendors. We don't, we have contracts come up and you have a conversation about that. Uh, no, no, a lot of times the first offer is. That doesn't really fit with our budget and then it's a back and forth when it can happen. Um, there are times when a smaller vendor will have just redone their whole platform. And instead of asking for their traditional one or two percent, they go to five percent. And they have to that year, but then usually their response of the next year, they don't do that. So we kind of write that in and we understand that and we continue negotiating. In good partnerships and so far it's worked out. Um, we also have other key parameters that we can hold when we're in overdrive and we're buying ebooks. The cost is there. But we're in control of how many copies we buy to fill holes. So where we might wanna be three to one in a physical book. We might with our digital books say, we're gonna keep it a five to one ratio. So for every five of our holds, we're gonna have one copy. So that's a way that we can leverage our costs to be more beneficial. We also have other controls with uh Canopy and Hoopla. We are in control about how many burrows we allow our community members to have. So that's another way we can leverage and control our budget costs, so we're doing that. Um. I think this really bodes well, what we're doing, the way we've cur- curated, the way we're forecasting even in the future and um. It allows us to have some really great resources. So we have our ebook resources. Um, but beyond that, um where we're just reading for fun or finding something informational, we have streaming media services where you. Have access to so many great movies. In fact, Hoopla, another way we leverage our costs and share out, they've added a binge passive democracy. If you're a film watcher. Log in there for one borrow, you have access for a week to every sort of um. Award-winning, smaller production film, so it's a great way. We have access to that, we share that outwards and uh we do, we work with communications to get that out there. We have um. Online learning and job support platforms like LinkedIn Learning, Brainfuse, Job Now, Mango Languages, and that. Helps people with their career and their school learning and just their lifelong learning, where they're at. We have really great homework help. Um, we have Brainfuse Help Now, we have National Geographic Kids, we have American Indian History, African American History, A to Z World Culture. Um, I like that Homework Help Now or that Brainfuse Help Now. I had a daughter who was just going to college. She was able to leverage that to work on her essays to study for. The ACT and SAT. That was a really great resource for her to use and I didn't have to go outside out of pocket to do that. Um. So it's a wonderful thing. It actually has a great area. If you have anyone doing the FAFSA, explaining how to fill out your FAFSA, that's helpful too. So uh we have business and for our business community, we have so many great resources like Value Line, Small Business Reference Center. It's amazing. Uh, we have, just for research, you can do amazing research using Academic Search uh Complete, which is something we leverage. That's why we use that one. That's a Swan, that's part of a package we get from them at a a really good cost for the library. Uh, we have ancestry dot com. We have Heritage Quest that you can just do so much with that. Um, we have creation uh creative. Things uh creative platforms like Creative Bug, where if you're a DIY person, you can go in and do a lot and learn a lot. I mean, if you like to sew or whatever you'd like to do. Um. We also have Press Book, which is for our local writers. They can actually uh create a digital copy of their book using that, so it's great. So. As we focus on building our diverse and inclusive collections, we use this hybrid approach. To leverage our budget to get the most of everything, meet our community's needs and I really feel. I really feel it's closing in fifty minutes, but no. All the work we're doing ensures that the library will remain a central community, providing the resources they need and um in various formats and it's not. Going to change, it's going to continue this way. So, but we feel pretty good about that. And I guess we'll go for the questions.
I have a question. Um, so I know you you mentioned that. Try to get things in both a physical and a digital medium, especially for multicultural kind of. Material, but do you ever mind that there's a barrier where you can get them in one medium and not the other? And what are we doing if that happens?
Um, do you want me to handle that? So we have the collection team, they work really hard and so our first format is our physical format. Uh, that is where we're gonna go, but there are some books that, or actually it's happening sometimes with movies, that they're just not available in that format, so we have to. Um, we just can't. We get it in the format, we can get it. We could have a purchase request for someone that says, I really want you to buy this in a physical audiobook CD. It's not available, nobody made that, so, but hey, by the way, it's in Hoopla. And we have that or I could buy that in Overdrive, it's there.
Okay. So so we are seeing that, you you made a good point, like, are they selling CDs of? Books anymore? Probably.
They're still there, but I will.
Not as robust as, you know, fifteen, twenty years ago. When you would maybe get a book on disc. We're leaning more towards digital options for those things and so we just don't have. The the physical copy.
Yeah, it's not, it just doesn't exist. We don't control that. It just isn't available for us to purchase.
Okay.
So how much? I'm sorry, um, I'm sorry, this is Ted Fuss. How much would it cost to be part of J Store?
Oh, J Store is another. So our competing um is. Using Academic Search Complete and we've chosen that um because it actually has a little bit more breadth. I will say J Store has the depth. What it has, it has a journal all the way to the beginning. Right now it's beyond. We'd have to. Re-get rid of something to add J Store, but the state, I'm watching it very closely. The state is thinking of doing a state consortium group where we can buy into. One of the platforms that they're thinking is J Store. So Ted, I'm watching that and I want to, I don't know what the pricing is and. It would be wrong to guess. Um, if you want me to look in, I can ask them for a price quote, but uh it's up in the thousands.
I know, it's 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 very expensive, but you know, as academics at uh in the Oak Park Public Library. J J Store would be wonderful. I get it through University of Chicago, but it would be wonderful to have it through OPPL.
I a hundred percent agree, but what we end up doing is we do an ILLs. Every once in a while, we'll get an academic saying, can you get me this article on J Store? We go out, part a part of our ILL department and we just ask another university for it. And so we can get patrons just about anything they want. And so that's what our interlibrary loan outside is for and a lot of it is article retrieval. But Ted, you're not the only one that we get asked that. I get one other person, I get you and one other person every year. But I promise you, I'm looking into it. I I I do try to leverage and I'm hoping the state does that.
What was the one you said that you use instead of just?
Academic Search Complete, which is an EBSO product.
I'm just curious about what the most common Library of Things checkout is.
I, last time we looked, I, oh.
I mean, it's not a quiz.
But you know what? Kathy pulls that every Monday and she tells me and she told me on Monday and I don't remember.
Of course, because we asked you that.
But I, yeah. But I can look that up. That's a very easy statistic pool and if you want, I can.
I I really just, I I think it's wonderful that we're doing it now, wondering like what it is that our communities.
I know it has the most holds on it. It's the sewing machine right now and the karaoke machine. We had to add another karaoke machine. We added another sewing machine. The embroidery machine is popular, but at this point, we're not adding another and the disco balls were very.
Disco ball.
Like a combo.
That was the last time I looked because we made some purchase decisions on that and that was in December. So I.
We'll throw in a fog machine too.
We have a fog machine. Uh, we do not provide the fog juice, you know.
I'm seeing a party package. Select it or is there like a recommendation?
It's part of our, we have a purchase recommendation form and we are open. We've had three purchase requests via um. For the Library of Things via that route and people can recommend a purchase for anything and we look at it and we decide. Um, we did add a, what did, we added a paper cutter. From that, just a slice, a small one, a safety based on uh. Based, no, a recommendation from a patron.
Are there things that are not eligible for the Library of Things?
Uh, there are some things we decided not to put in. Um, someone asked, I think, for like a mini chainsaw. No, I don't think so. Um, I mean, we do have power tools, but we're very aware of like. Once we check this out to you and you take it home like. So, yeah, we we think very carefully. I think when we were talking about this a bazillion and four years ago. When when somebody at this table was doing a lot of baking that was not me, we talked about like spring form pans and.
Forward to her use.
Um, so we we made a choice not to include things like that because when things returned, we didn't want that. I have to worry.
We don't have a washing.
Yes.
This is why I was asking if there were things we had chosen not to put in, because I knew it had been a community ask before and I saw there was none of that down there. And so I figured there had to be a very good reason.
Yes, that's that's. Honestly, it's like, that's a thing I had not initially considered with the idea of like. Hands and stuff like that, but actually it's like taking all that, like you would, you you assume a certain level of risk. With that and I am. And now that I'm thinking about it, not.
Much less risk with karaoke machine.
Yeah.
You have that very second, here's a reason.
I wanted that, Lupo. So that was something that was part of the request and we earmarked it for the Center for Library of Things.
She would have loved that.
I have a question. I said, so for LinkedIn Learning, how is that? I'm just curious how it actually works and if I need to not ask this question in open forum and just have a thought maybe that works as well. But because is it linked to your your card and then how does it link back to your personal? Linked in account and how, what are the privacy implications?
It does not link back to your uh LinkedIn account. It is by your library card only and the two do not link together. And that is how LinkedIn had suggested when they bought. It used to be another product called Lynda dot com. LinkedIn purchased it and that because of libraries and privacy, they're not linked together. It's library card authentication.
No, I appreciate that. That's great.
Okay, any other questions? I just, the mention I did like, I can't hear J Store or nothing of air shorts, uh, early, it's. Yeah, and like and how miserable it is like.
Actually, it's a really great platform now and pretty easy to use. Um, I'm pretty sure the high school has it. That's another reason why we haven't, because the people that would most use it would be high school students.
Yeah.
And if you're in college, your college has it, but it is nice for academic community members. We do have many, but. We do get their articles for them.
Yeah. And I just don't like having, probably funded research articles.
Uh, I'm sure the the physical book is fifteen, well, digital book is fifty-two. Like, what what's the timeframe? On those, like the digital book, do you get it for a certain number of years or?
It depends. You can get a perpetual use book, which is probably gonna be closer to ninety dollars. You can get metered access. For one year or two years, you can get metered access that is two years or twenty-four circulations. It just depends. The publishers hold those. Um, there's really great charts out there. Um, ALA just put out a great report that gave the twenty twenty-three what that looked like and who was doing what. And it changes all the time. So when you go in to buy, we curate in Overdrive. When you go in to buy, you see your price.
Send the link to the ALA chart to the board, please.
I, yeah, it's embedded somewhere in that report, I think. I have to look, but I'll find it otherwise. Um.
That would be, oh, of course, I know, I know, I haven't gotten that question. Time about like, you know, like, well, we have to rebuy. Well, you know, like they 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 make us rebuy, you know, so well, there's an official book and people will give me like a. Like I said, the the who's made of cheese, um, because they're like, that doesn't make any sense. Like, no, it doesn't.
Buying the book, we're buying the license. Right to use it under a certain circumstances. Exactly, nineteen eighty-four, is that not a lot of people?
And I'm also just wondering, you know, these physical books don't last forever, either. Many on circulation. If there's any kind of comparison there, that we can have your community members that are.
I don't have that, but what I'm guessing is um the publisher spend a lot of money uh creating their business model around this. I know that we put in. For a certain amount of circulations, we have what's called Grubby. We use a product called Collection X Q. Grubby means we're gonna take a look at it to see how it's doing. We do that at. Eighteen circulations and we're gonna literally say, can you make it through? But it just depends on the book. A paperback is different than a hard copy, a children's book. Had a shorter lifespan than an adult book. Sorry, um, and it. We don't. Have a, we haven't shared a metric. Have a, we haven't shared a metric on that. We don't keep track of that.
Yeah.
Fully when I have to replace it. I mean, a book, I could buy a branded book. I had something come in. I looked at today, someone spilled all over it. So I just bought that. It just came out in January. We're buying another copy because someone's.
I feel like, I feel like there's as much art as science in that.
Yes.
And there's there's like, well, yeah, like you said, it's like some, some books, you know, they they get a, they get a heavy user, you know, heavy handed user and so along. Don't.
Some books I can kind of, oh, this is never checked out. When I look, this is checked out five times. Who is, why does this look so good? I can't answer that. I wish I could.
Um, so basically, digital books all around. Are significantly more expensive, but the demand is significant.
It is, but I'm going to be honest with you, even though it's skyrocketing and it looks huge. Digital in twenty twenty-three, digital circulation is only twenty-nine percent of our overall circulation. So our physical materials are cir- circulating. Well, seventy, seventy-one percent more than our digital. So it's growing, but it's still. The number is not as high.
It's far higher than it was in nineteen twenty.
And it's going to continue growing, but it's still just a third of our circulation.
Nineteen and early.
But it's turning to be more than a third of the cost of materials.
Uh, I will say that. Uh. Yeah. Yes, I I mean, the numbers are there because of the cost. I mean, I can't meet the community demand. Without that.
Right, yeah, I was just trying to.
Yeah, yeah, so it's.
Wrap our heads around it. Yeah, I think it has a lot to do with thinking about. Controlling.
It has to do with like, there are there, there are three times more expensive, so they eat up that much more of our budget. And so they're very popular, but it's the cost. And I will send the link to that ALA article because it's a report, the end of the year report. Which I wrote this before they wrote theirs, that it had been published. I felt really good about. Our projections after, it's like, oh, I'm on board. I did it. We did it.
And you said something about how um you have like five holes for each copy, right? That's about the decision that you.
That's what we try to do for digital, but it's not always popular, like tape lessons in chemistry. We can never. We can't do that for that nine month period where it's. Gone crazy, but on average.
Yeah, no, no, I understand. I was just, I was just trying to figure out um. About comparables because I I was talking to somebody in Evanston, I think, at EMEA and Evanston. Who said that they were waiting for a book that's not lessons in chemistry for um for like forty weeks or something, you know, like it just. I think the different libraries have different benchmarks. So I think that five weeks is actually, I mean, five holes. For Orson, which probably comes to max of ten weeks, right?
Well, five months and twenty-one days.
It it never works out as perfectly as you want it to. I mean, I'm going to be honest with you, so. It just, I wish that it was that short of a turnaround, but I think we're at. Thirty days, thirty-one days, last time I looked, because you're, it's just as. Hard to meet demand. There are not just one lessons in chemistry. There's another. There's five other books that are ruining that hold ratio and the people that are waiting are waiting for the most popular. If you go secondary, boom, it's there. But you could also go to hoopla. People have to understand that what you see. You can check out right there, but we don't curate that. That's already built. It's a cost per circ.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I'm starting thinking back to when um. Uh, what was the? The. You have to change it, right? Oh man, oh, I was thinking of like the holes on that, like every library. And like, I think it was, it was. Yeah. But that was, but yeah, it's like, there was always some book that is like going to totally, you know, blow. The, you know, the, the average out of, you know, the, I mean, that was, you have to change the grave. It's like, I mean, we, they showed us a, they were like, oh, monster, we. We're like, oh, God, see, this is because we were curious. It was like. Like across swat, like the numbers were like. Like, we're just so, so crazy. I'm sure it was everywhere. I'm sure it was like, it was just like, it was fun because people were like, you know.
That one book.
Yeah.
So I wonder if, you know, a long way that digitally, no cost more can help with those kinds of spikes. Because you don't need to actually physically, I mean, you're buying it, but you're buying it for a period of time, right?
But I buy a copy for a period of time, so then I have to buy, I might have to buy twenty copies, ten copies at that cost.
Oh, right.
Unless it's in hoopla, then.
Go down for volume.
No, no.
Can people express frustration waiting? Because I think like from my perspective, I feel like digital, I feel like ebooks and audio and like I don't feel. Urgent about getting them because like it'll just show up on my Kindle and I'll be happy and there's so many other books.
No, we don't.
Do people really, are people frustrated by like the weekends or?
Not that they share with us, but I'm sure there is. I mean, you want it digitally. It's there. I see it. I want it and it says. There are seven people ahead of me and that I'm sure is frustrating, but people are pretty good about. Keeping the frustration.
There's like a difference of perception between digital versus. Physical, like a different urgency, but I don't know. It does, it's just.
I do think people go to digital for the urgency. I agree, but I think they put that on hold and get something else.
Yeah.
And I think we had more conversations around this. I think our community is pretty educated in how it works and so I think they get it now.
Yeah, I feel like once you know the system, you can kind of work it to your favor. And also there's just other avenues. I mean, I don't like people use Audible, but not Audible is free audiobooks too and. So there's, you know, there are options for hoopla. It's already built and there's a cost per.
Cost per circ. So what happens is they curate that. That is a collection. It's like Netflix. I don't get to pick what's in this. It's just there and it's available. If you see it, you click on it, it's yours. And then we're paying per click for our community members click on that.
Okay, so each time.
One of the wonderful things about getting a physical object from the library. Is getting that receipt and seeing how much money you saved by not buying the book.
Yep.
So I'm I'm guessing the. Cost per circulation, that's something that we saw. Skyrocket almost, I don't want to say unexpectedly, but unexpectedly at the beginning of. The the ramp up of the digital because we've kind of been using it as a, you know. It's already curated, like it it set it and forget it kind of resource. But then if we're paying per click and the clicks are going up. Then that was not something we had budgeted for in the same way that we would have budgeted for individual resources.
That is correct and that is um where I said our controls are. We had bumped up how many burrows you could have in hoopla? I will be honest, we are going to, we have to bring that back down to keep it in line. Um, it's still going to be more than pre-COVID, but it is becoming, as we're. Creating more and more community members coming in, we're getting great, we're adding about hundred new community members each month and that's. Been averaging since COVID and more and more people want to use it and to keep it. Keep it open for everyone to be sustainable. We're going to have to do that as more and more people come in.
Are there certain digital resources that we as the board? Could promote? That would. Still get the community, the resources that they're looking for, but would be more, but you know, more physically responsible for us. Inside. So like, uh, are there certain places where we can use digital resources where? We're not doing the cost per circ, where we might be able to still provide what we're doing.
Encourage the public that in our conversations to.
Because I can't tell you how many times I'm like, hmm, why are you, why are you even here? Like, but if I know that that's not a preferred way for us to keep our costs in check. Should I be re- recommending another?
I I wouldn't, I don't think so. I mean, we we are about access. Um, and we're very responsive to our community. If our community wants it, then we try to give it to them. So I I think instead of. Kind of directing people to other resources to keep those costs down, it's just kind of on us during the budget planning of like. Making sure that like across the collections, we are doing that responsibly. So you're not seeing like. We increase about three point two percent um every year. So you know, while that's an increase, we're not asking for a large ask every budget year and that's because we plan. Like, like what we have, what we want. And in some cases, like Barbara and I were talking about. In in order to get something, we may have to give up something else.
I mean, I know, I know where the earth, there's been created also platforms that we've used and. And and stuff like that we have because they changed their. Their license, you know, their, they changed their, they curated into our publishers they worked with, what things were just. Me, you know, I always think that, you know, there, there was one, there was a music streaming one that. We had for a while and I can't remember what it was, but it was like, I think the numbers were like. Uh, you know, there's like a very small section of. The of our users were using it a lot. And driving it and it's sort of like one of those things where it's like, there's, there's a group that was really using it, but not, but they were driving most of that and it's like. There's other stuff that we can use that has better selection, but different features and so like.
Index for the rest of the.
Yeah, that was, and that, and that move was made. And so it was one of those things where I think. I know that those, some of those decisions have been made over time. You know, so. And that's something I appreciate is like you are. Focused on that and you do have that mind of like, what is serving our community?
Right. And what I would say, Virginia, if people like movies and hoopla, say, what about canopy? Try that and leverage both and. Understand that we have so much and it's not just overdrive. It can be hoopla. It's not just hoopla. It could be hoopla, canopy or overdrive. Or actually maybe National Geographic, National Geographic has great little movies for kids. It's a learning. It's not as fun as watching. Maybe a TV show, but it's another thing to try, you know?
What about the, we have the Roku, right? So those are.
And the Rokus and you can check out Roku and they are pre-programmed with free services. There are thousands of free movies on our Rokus. I forgot about that. Thanks, John. And you can really, there's a lot on there. I was unaware of how many free movie apps there were.
It's brilliant. How long do you train on Roku for?
Three weeks.
It's a lot of things.
But the truth is, if you happen to have a smart TV or app TV, you can put all of those free apps on there. I was not. Aware of those until I started investigating this and I went home and put a lot of free movie apps on my own.
You know, you could ask a lot for your.
It's a full-time job.
Overall, the the experiments that I I remember are about four percent more. This year than last, is what I remember.
I think it was three point two, yeah.
And like, we're probably going to expect that to keep that pace just because that's.
Around three percent, yeah. And we were two percent the year before. Um, the year before that, it was. Again, three, the year before that was a bigger jump when we did that to the more digital we had to.
So yeah, and you could play, is it more about that we're selecting more digital books or is that the price of? These services is going up or kind of a combination of both?
Combination because. We separate online resources and digital resources, but it's the online resources, resources that are our databases and they will raise their costs, some of them each year. They just do. And um the other is we're buying more because there's more demand.
I think.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
That was Gay November Report, no?
We'll go into new business, see to that uh policy.
So the good news is, last year about this time, we did a complete refresh of this policy. Um, bringing it up to date in all areas. And so this year, what we have to do is. Um, make changes to keep up with the amendments or new laws that are coming out in Illinois, Oregon, Illinois. Um, so all the changes to leave the absence of policy are because of changes to Illinois law. Um, so specifically, um, last year, the um bereavement leave was amended, so we we made changes to that to, it's expanded for child. Child extended bereavement leave, so we added in language about that. And then also they amended VESA. VESA is victims. Economic, why do I do this to myself? I don't, but victim victims economic um.
Security.
Secu- yeah, Security and Safety Act. Um, it is uh designed to protect those that um. Commanding leave because of, um, I believe it's. Or. Yeah. Yeah, and what, and what they've added then, what they added this year is those who, like, so you can attend a funeral or make arrangements. Uh, where someone is killed in a kind of violence, a kind of violence, so that's the language they use. Um, and then they went on to divine kind of violence and and just kind of making sure that our um. That our policies reflect those, reflect those changes. Um, any questions about those two, the bereavement?
Well, I I guess, I was the, I mean, it's. The child extended. Breavement. Me, I just. This is still hard to talk about, but I feel like. What, like what, what about accidents? You know, like you, like I I'm assuming that the law makes like. Is is that right? Like the law makes a particular case for uh losing a child to.
Yes, the law, there was, there was probably something, I mean, how how does how does the law become the law? I mean, there's probably something specific happened and then.
Sure.
You know, people um that are willing to make changes because of it. And like, this is something um specifically carved out and we, and and so we have a policy that reflects. That's that specific one. But in general, our bereavement leave policy, it it's, it's a mix of guaranteeing. Um, well, Illinois guarantees you per the law, like five, like um up to ten days and then in the child bereavement one is, I think it's six weeks. Six weeks. Um, and. And then it says like, what portion of that will we pay? The the all this law requires a time off. It doesn't actually require us to pay for that time.
Yeah.
But we, but we go say, well, well, five days of bereavement leave regardless of of. Uh, of of who it is or what the reason is. Um, five days of bereavement leave paid. And then you can take additional time off. And actually, we don't even, like, our policy would allow for, like, really no cap on that as long as you need time off. Um, and, but you might use use health leave or other paid time off, that's paid for.
No, I don't.
How we get around it, but we don't provide like a reason for like every single thing that could happen.
Yeah.
You want to make sure our policies include what the law requires us to to do, but we do have a way to acknowledge other things that happen.
I just, you know, you. You all are so good in general of doing more than what the state does. And I just think, I don't know, there's just something. It's hard to dwell on, but it's just, there's something um to me really disturbing. About calling out those things, which are obviously deeply traumatic, but like loss of. Child is loss of child, you know? You know, like it just, like, well, like, yeah, it's like, look on that, like, that's not. That doesn't require six weeks, but. Man, I understand that we'll do it.
Are there cases where you all have them more extensively, like there's some situation?
Yeah, yes, I'm sure that there are. Um.
Because I feel like you can't. Account for everything. Like there are just like really optional drivers that happen and.
You know, I mean, we're we're fortunate to to not have a lot of those. I mean, commonly it's, you know, um, uh, you know, grandparent. Um, someone, someone's requesting somewhere between five, five to ten days in in that situation.
Yeah. And I guess what I, like. So and it could be more question part, it's not dictating and prescribing this, but I guess, you know, my first thought was just the introduction is like. Including, but not limited to. And then the list, because most of those are laws, right? And I do protection under the law. And then noting that there is certain parameters for the manager's discretion. And then like, you know, and leave that prescribed piece to. The senior leadership, the leadership of the library to determine what is appropriate. Um, I know that the law is very specific. Under, you know, the child extended bereavement, that it is very specifically about the, the trauma, the violence. I I will say as a parent, I have so much joy. I'm trying not to cry thinking about this, honestly. Um, but I I would expect that, you know, the manager could say, all right, you. But I I would expect that, you know, the manager could say, all right, you are you're dealing with. A child who's taken because of a family accident or because of a long battle, it will be near and then like. That is the discretion of and I would not want to say that it's limited only to. The particular pieces of the law because I do believe that this is a very. Humanistic group of people um that run this library. And I would I would suggest maybe not limiting yourself to just. The law and allowing yourself that that discretion, I do not want to prescribe it. In a policy, but I do feel like it's fair to make those amendments. So that it allows for that piece. Um I guess my other question would be is given that we are updating. This. Specifically because of new Illinois legislation, if it makes sense. To note that at a minimum, like it is too neat. And like just call out those specific Illinois statutes amended from time to time. Under, you know, the reasonable law, this is how we're interpreting your minimum. Policy, again, noting that manager discretion, noting senior leadership's ability to come up with a procedure. That really is is encompassing of what is appropriate, given the circumstances. So what were what were like the general notes? That I I have when I run over this policy?
Okay, I'm just not around.
Yeah, yeah, so it sounds like, well, in the policy, we should just add like. Twenty twenty four, this is the Illinois state standard for and then updated, you know, after a change, is that?
Well, I mean, I I just want to use like, you could do the do the do, you could you could just say that, you know, and cite the statutes as amended and updated from time to time. And then that way you don't have to keep. Updating it because you'll just know the policy will always follow. The statute at a minimum, like that's the minimum it creates, it does not create the ceiling, it creates the floor. Um. And if you, and that way you don't have to amend it unless there is something that. That's.
Just add a tone policy, which you are just still.
Yeah.
Well, well, here's the here's the thing, like. Whether or not this goes into policy, it's still the law and we have to follow it, so we're just, we're trying to make it clear to our employees what what what.
Right.
We're saying we're going to do, um. Yeah, it.
I I guess maybe my question is as simple as. Are we in breach of anything if we say who have lost a child are eligible for and just take out the phrase?
Like to the to the reason why?
Yeah, like if we just were to say go back.
You can you can certainly do more than what the law requires and that would be more than what the law requires, um. I mean, I'm I'm open to it, I don't, I mean.
Let's be more creative if we want to phrase it, like.
In the in the other words, due to. Homicide or suicide, so you say have lost a child are eligible for and and so. I I guess it's sounding like any other words, but I want to be asked is reconsidering. The library's commitment to that policy, so that you wouldn't be saying that you're not just. It wouldn't just be under those two situations, I mean, I want to imagine, I cannot imagine really this being wrong, who would I not imagine like somebody coming to you and saying. My child was just run over and you're like, well, no, that's actually.
Five, five, five days, yeah, 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 no, that's not how we would handle it.
Like we take that, uh I mean, the. We do this for when when all of us have bought our owls and we're not here anymore, we we're going to do something else, so if. If we want to make sure that the next four and the next staff here are are helped to. Any child, then, yeah, I don't, I don't see why there's.
Because it would cover the law, as you're saying, right, like it would be more than what the law admires.
And I think.
When the spirit of this though, was it to add more for these circumstances, you constantly exclude the things that you're talking about. But I thought like it got added and maybe a lot, I know the history of it, like to give more time. For those things, so everybody has a standard five and then this gave you more.
But I think I think I think that I think the. So, well, the the issue they're raising is that why does the. Why does homicide and suicide related loss of a child?
Oh.
Is that why is us deserving of additional?
I mean.
I mean, but now, I mean, I mean, the law, it feels like it related as different than like an accidental loss of a child, it's like. You know, and I and I and I think that's the point is like, loss of a child is loss of a child, whether it's homicide, accident or suicide. You know, where there's an accident or accident that that takes that child's life.
Well, that is.
It's a matter of, I think that's what it's like, I think we should approach it as loss of a child.
Right, like not not.
Not not.
Not how to mitigate the actual issue about like the trauma of violence, you know, like I I don't want to.
No.
Necessarily try to do that, but I say as a language. Like we can say this is a good method, I would share, like we. We're 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 allocated to cover this situation, might as well just say those words out and. You know, be a little more expansive.
Or instead of taking them out, maybe we can add to it and say, like, we follow the law, it seems like okay, they made the law specifically to do that, so. To be in compliance, we need to hold back, but.
We can still be in compliance, we can still be just to say loss of a child, but.
Action law is specifically.
You know, for this.
For the, and like recognizing the legal hurdle that you only. Court and all of these other issues that are.
Sure, the balance still be covered, right?
I mean, I understand. Right, you know, that's why that's why I suggested like that, including the not limited to and then noting that there will be. Additional power based on like manager. Discretion and senior leadership discretion, so I can allow you, because like whether or not we want to say, well, any parent gets six weeks. Off, which would not even begin to.
No.
My brief, right, but I I will I will say that like it's. It's about the protection of the job, because if you have to go to court for like a month.
I don't see how the removal of that phrase, due to homicide or suicide, removes that protection when you have to go to court. It does, it's just, this is the the language of the law that.
Right, I have to know, it's the law, I go this, so your language without that phrase covers the language of the law, which is more. But you want to say that we will allow. Six weeks off for bereavement of any child, but any, but any minor child or any adult child. Or is it any child?
But when we.
Yeah.
Well, very good.
For immediate family.
Right, you do have remunerate leave already.
And that's how we thought about that. Well, there's she would, there there would be. In addition to covering the law, there's also the capacity for leadership to decide more.
Right.
Just then make sure that we're covering the law.
A lot.
Usually, it's. I have a good, I have an argument of how removing the phrase due to homicide or suicide, which I just want to add. If I actually lost, I can't even imagine, but let's say somebody actually loses a child to either one of those things, they don't actually need like a. Trigger language in your policy to to hear, do you know what I mean?
We're not agreeing against that, we're just saying, what what the law did was the, who does has a separate thing against who honor what you're saying. He needs to add not to play with what the law said.
Accretion from, but it's not a quote from the law.
I think it is.
No, no, I'm sorry if I if I used the term recommended, but the the the, yeah, sorry, the attorneys have written that specifically to comply with the law. Um it's like everything that's in red in all my.
It's more and have those things that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Add it or say that like, can we just make it more encompassing?
We can, but we're just saying we don't want to catch it in that part, we could add.
Right, we we have to make it all encompassing with additive language. And while I'm removing or entering. This specific variation that's been handed to and that's. But the question is. Recognizing that thick weeks did not. Brilliant, to be honest, because not like, oh, well, at the end of six weeks, you're fine. But the the issue is think about things for fifth week. You have protection not to be at work, are you saying that for every single? Yeah, yeah, okay, you lost a child, yes, you have to use that, you say a minimum of six weeks.
That's the best that's said, so I'm asking, not that the removal of the law on, but also.
They already covered.
I'm saying that the removal of, that's why I said that the removal of the clause is not about language, but it's actually about. Rethinking your policy, which is the.
I just, I mean, man, I I you all don't know people who have lost children, but I sure do, and it is, it took that person uh. Two years to kind of come back to work, and so nobody's arguing. Who we prefer have an ad hoc like manager employee relationship instead of a policy that is spelled out as a PK six weeks, like. Then we're depending on our dynamic between manager and employee to say, what do you deserve for your child death or your partner.
Yeah.
And you make that in my comments.
I've done this so many times, I. Actually, really. The. Oh, wait, hold on, I was.
Great, the amount of things that we don't honor it at all in this country, but like.
But I'm just saying, like every other policy you have as a board, you tend to add on, do more. Development laws requirements, like that we do that.
We're okay with doing that, we don't want to amend the legal thing that we're trying to cover, so in honoring what you're saying, you want to.
And I was just, I have a lot of concerns, so can I, I'm going to say, I think I think we should put it in my answer.
Thank you, my ask is that we ask for words, that's what I'm saying. I my ask is that we ask the legal team, that if you take away that phrase, does that still whatever, cover our access? Because I'm not, I mean, we're.
It so, moderate, I know the answer, it will, but. The issue is when you open up to every child, right, so every child, you have an eighty-year-old employee, their sixty-year-old child is now, is like, it's like. At like, at what point are we moving beyond?
Okay, so let me ask you this quickly, if I have a child who who dies by homicide, what age does that child come?
Yeah, I don't know, that's a great, that's a great question, that's right, that's a great question.
That's a separate issue from whether or not we're attributing cause of death. Can somebody ask for, I I understand that. The changes that we're looking for have to be additive, but can we ask for? Language that would do that for us?
I haven't, I haven't heard of a visiting attorney that didn't pass one.
Well, we asked for him to go to the lawyers and ask if it's going to cover us, right, if you know. Can we get some language that would, yeah, do what we're asking?
That's what I would like. And it's it does start getting me from confusing, so an employee loses a spouse. Or a parent to suicide and you're like, oh, sorry, five day, you know, I mean, this is complex.
In five, five days is. Five days is what we're saying will pay and then and then the additional leave can can certainly be approved, I. We we had a policy previous to this that was very much more open-ended, we elected last year to more like defining things more specifically because. Um having it defined and having it spelled out is is I think better for like staff to be able to read it and understand it rather than this. Ambiguous like, like a time off and we'll support you in your time off, well, how much does that mean?
Sure.
So anyway, so we've gone the other way and gotten very specific. I don't know.
Right, no, I I understand that, I understand that it can be confusing, I am not, having lost both my parents in the last four years, I'm not at home. Um. Unaware of the different kinds of briefs that exist that extend beyond the parents losing, you know, their child, all I'm saying. Is legally, I believe, they're covered. Because by taking away words, we're actually making it more expansive, including the thing and the. The issue that we're talking about is do we want coverage for every child, I'm saying yes, and the issue is do we want for every child about, you know, whatever age that is. That's not actually part of some of the policy regardless.
Mm-hmm.
So like that, that is maybe a thing that we should we should consider, but that's not what we.
You think that that's been policy that anybody or any person like can get. I'm okay with that.
I'm giving them too, but that's up to them to figure out.
Who's them to figure out, I I was. Because because getting me meeting me direction.
That's like, well, then they just figure it out, that's like, that's a, that's a substantial. Policy change that this board would need to discuss, debate and and vote on.
Yes.
And that's why.
Absolutely.
If we want to have that discussion, probably a general agreement, we can do that, but it's not. Right now, I think the ask first step is to take back to the the our council to see. How to best address. The the change in this specific section regarding. Uh that for a child that is not the the child extended bereavement leave. That is not limited to just homicide and suicide.
And Suzanne, to your point, I think once we see what the legal team comes back with and how they've expanded this portion. We can then see how that would apply. More widely to other parts of our bereavement leave, I think getting an answer to this will help us figure out how we do the rest of it, right, as well.
And we'll make sure we're covered, we do it, and so we're not kind of guessing at it and then find ourselves. I think that was our only hesitation, not that you don't want to honor it, but we still need to, so we can do that, we'll take it back.
I I think that's what I said.
It's it's already, it's already in effect, like it's, we already have to, we already have to do this, so it's just a matter of making sure our policy matches what the law is. It's already the law, um Justin, I would just, uh uh. It's a thought that I had is, I mean, I can of course certainly ask the questions and get this amended, but I also thought. To give the board something to consider, I can show you what a different, more uh humanistic um. Bereavement compassion leave policy would look like to react to for next month, and that's, I mean, getting some, this was just about to letter the law, getting something that's like a little bit more. Uh responding to.
Yes, let's do that and then, but we're also just doing the editing to make sure.
I think they really have to be specific.
Right.
Yeah.
Before, before generous bereavement policy also goes through the orders, right?
Yes, correct, yeah.
Right, like if that comes back for us.
Yeah, so, I mean, yeah, it's just, it's like, and you know, someone might be so close to their grandparent and then only get a day or two and then. Someone might have no relationship with their parent and it's just, it's so personal, I think.
But everyone gets five, 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 five days, five days guaranteed, paid in up to ten days total and then for certain situations, uh more.
Yeah, I think it's just, it's really irksome to like read this and I know that's not unusual, but it's just like. The explicitness is jarring. Just because it is like, I was like, the more human it's different, I'd like to do that, yeah.
Thank you for making that offer.
That's a very kind offer, but I also feel. The need to also consider if we are making like really expansive. Like, recognizing that week doesn't end in six weeks, like, I think that we can't make the library's policies. The Band-Aid for everything wrong in this country and in this world.
What do you agree on?
But no, I don't, but I have, I have a baby, my two years off. I or maybe six days, four, five, like we're getting, sorry, we're, you know, getting along.
No, I know.
It's not like you you started, but that's where some of this conversation.
But I, but but you're, no, we're going there right now, what we went with, what we had agreed to was something very specific. The our HR and budget portion came to us and said that instead you could bring as a model. Something that's written down, that's been vetted by the lawyers of a more generous bereavement policy that would be words on paper that we could look at. At the next session, that is very, very different from, I would say, that we're trying to put a Band-Aid on all the things that are wrong in this country.
What happens when we see that policy? It comes in, it's a perfect set, so all of them, no, no, six months, six weeks isn't enough, I want twelve, like at what point do we stop?
At the point that you finish, that the point that we get more.
I feel like stuff I'm worrying, we learned that we used the policy before, you know, that's what's. But I mean, like, there was. Was just a, I I mean, that's a personal thing that I have witnessed of like not being ready to work, I'm not suggesting that that. Should be our policy, I'm just giving that as a. Context for like, I am entering a conversation with someone and I see we dealt with as like a whole passing away and it's really hard to. Not see that reflected in this league.
And I think that's why this also gets really hard is because we've all dealt with.
And I think that's why this also gets really hard is because we've all dealt with very difficult forms of grief.
Something there and I see it reflected in this document.
Right, and I think, um, I think Billy's offer is a really wonderful one.
Yes.
But so what I will say is we do all staff accounts. We, it cannot be like open ended, there is a limit, um, it has to be a smooth work. And so like, especially, I just wanna enter back into the chat too.
Well, sure.
And, and there's a point where like other leaves, other leaves come into play too.
Yeah.
And you're talking, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so I think we got to making it uh, more specific as some of the law is too. Cause when I heard you say it was, it was very general. Um, and then this, and then, uh,
And no one knew
I heard you say the balance, the power balance of that.
Yeah.
No, no one knew how to interpret it.
Right.
And so I had to interpret every, every, every time I happened into this.
So I might, this way, I might, this way, this helps not do that and it has specific, like, okay, we use it here, then there's some more here. And so, you know, it is a balance of respecting people's grief, but also respecting, you know, like, you know, there is a job to do. And, you know, we have D A P, we have other things, we have F M L A, like, there's a lot of options that we have in respect to even people in time off. We also just got twenty hours for anything, right?
The, the forty hours for anything, yeah. Personally, so like, yeah, we, we offered generously, even, even before that, but yeah. Um, the, yeah, there's, there's um, two things to consider when you're talking about leave, at least is like um, uh, the, uh, what type of leave does it qualify as and is it paid or not? And so that's um, something to keep in mind when you're looking at these.
And then of jobs being, you know.
Yeah, is it, is it protected or is it not?
A whole ton of jobs, yeah. For six weeks, but it is unpaid.
Co- correct.
So just like
I don't have any
Except if you have paid parental leave.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then we do, like, we, like, we can choose to do more, and that's, and that's what we've done.
And we have some blood and organ donation.
No, I can be
Uh, yeah, so it sounds like this, this, uh, the policy as it is, is not gonna be a frictionate, but I didn't even get to the blood and organ donation leave. Uh, which is literally written just per the letter of the law, which may or may not be a good thing for this conversation. Um, uh, but guaranteeing time off to donate blood or to, to do, and then to donate organs.
Um, that's a new law, that's
New law, and it's paid, it's paid leave too. So that's, it's interesting that this one gets paid, the other ones don't, some.
Hmm, trying, probably trying to drum up that though, because there's always a, there's always
Yeah.
Yeah, it's about creating a, a market and there is no market.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Well, no, those are the, the three different, you know, leaves, and it sounds like you're not gonna vote on this tonight because you won.
They're all one.
They're all together, all together under any sort of policy.
We can, we approve that.
Once we have the, uh, once we have the bereavement leave language, yeah.
Thank you. Not a minor thing, but not as a matter of reading through to other policy, because we're consistent in terms of how we use numbers and dates and such, because it's a little bit different in different sections.
Hmm, yeah, I'll try, I will try.
Yeah.
I will try.
Sorry about that, that's super inappropriate.
If we're gonna with this one, um that was, it also allows absence from work due to, some of those seem like, and also some of those seem like they're, they're part of bereavement.
Um, what, what, which, oh, in bereavement, in bereavement.
Yeah, but like so I'm just
Those are straight from the Illinois law, like, uh, yeah, from, this was an update from last year that, yeah.
I'm just thinking, you know, certain things that seem like part of the category and stuff.
Yeah, so Illinois specifically spelled them out differently, separately. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
But again, if we have a more, a more inclusive policy, we might have to, we might just remove all the definitions altogether. So that's
That's, well, not that.
Yeah. That was one of the areas that on leave, on bereavement leave, so you've seen how many, like, what the average amount I take down and off, just because I think
Close to five days, five days paid, but if I, and the additional time.
Tragic losses, well, it's
Correct, and I, and I, and I'm not seeing tragic losses, it's, it's again, nine times out of ten, it's the death of a grandparent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess, I just wonder that, cause someone reminded me about like not having a staff. I, I don't know that that's an issue unless everyone took the whole six weeks and honestly must be looking at work too, so.
Yeah, ballpark, ballparking it, I mean, I think I see bereavement leave happening from ten, between ten to twenty times a year. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
There's the business, uh, orders.
Okay, um I think this, that is, that and Ron, uh, we had talked about, and just something that's going to be all about the format that we currently have, the format. Um, you know, it's very long, I, I don't, I think we're on page a hundred and something now. Uh, well, to be fair, we have three months of, but, but you want about eighty pages, it's a lot to read, it's a lot to take in. Um, everything is not reflected, it's very programmatic, chromatic heavy or public services heavy. Um, and so you don't, you know, sometimes you don't hear about facilities or I T or that sort of thing. We do have strategic priorities, so with that in mind, um, I have a form I work with Valerie, um, and Joey to come up with um, like a deeper format, so I'm just giving you a heads up, this will look a lot different next month. I was gonna be this month, but like we just got back from, you know, being on, and so there was no way to upscale it that fast, a lot, you know, people were out. Um, but, uh, I would, I would, I would recommend, I would invite, I would implore, like, uh, we can try it out for six months and then we get some feedback on it and then let me know if you want some changes, because we like, we put a lot of time into it. And, you know, I wanna, I wanna see how it plays out. So what it's going to look like is the strategic priorities will play a part in how the reporting goes. So, uh, all the strategic priorities will be there, my report will talk about what I did and where that lies in each of the four. I think that the other thing behind that is, so we did all that work and we still go to the door, we don't talk about it anymore, it doesn't, you know, like, in practice, it doesn't relate to anything that we do. Um, it's something to talk about when I was, um, working with my team here and they're one of ones like, you know, where's your work nest site in terms of the four things? And so in, instead of like a narrative or like a report, it'll be, you know, like, like a short answer kind of thing of, you know, uh, I live for across the board. So then, like, you'll have Marjine have something, you'll have, like I said, you know, um, you know, like Marjina and Rob don't do narrative reports. Uh, and so, you know, so that's, it's gonna look that way, that's the change. You'll still have a core statistics, uh, but it's just how it's gonna be reported out. It has nice little, um, you know, what do you call that, like, um, we have, she made little graphics for what each of our things mean, so like for my department or for, you know, so you'll see where it goes. So it's just a heads up, it'll be a little different. And I hope it's something, you know, like it'll be equal versus trying to read through a chunk of really long dense um, you know, narrative reports that are focused on only one or two things, like read departments.
Well, thank you for warning us before we
Yeah.
Yeah.
Opened it and saw there were seventy five pages missing.
Yes, yes. So, you know, uh, like I said, the, the attempt is to tie it to our strategic priorities that we worked on. And so you get an overview of, you know, not that I went to a hundred meetings, I could write you a list of that all day, but so what? So, okay, I wasn't listening to that, but what am I, what is with that, but it's a need, how to tie to engagement stewardship, anti-racism and like, thank you. Oh, uh, so that's, that's all I'll say about that, just a heads up that it's going.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so next is the evaluation report, the timeline for review. Um, I think at this point, any, uh, leadership team that wants to head home
Yeah.
Uh, they can run for it, I think that's, I, I will not, my feelings will not be hers.
Mine will, um, should, close their eyes for that, test their hands and let them Yeah, but I have my own inbox of ideas. And I forgot, but I, I got a face model as it was at school in the mornings.
So, yeah, let's try to
I will be very sleepy. Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Well, I would, I think that I would, I would like at least take a few minutes to have everyone to to look over this, this document, um, hopefully, you know, with, uh, Justin, you weren't here, um, I hope that you have better things to do than water to our YouTube, our media, our special meeting. Um, so consensus, uh, I believe I should review, um, for, just to kind of give you a heads up that the, can, the, the, the decision of the board was to adapt the job description that was posted and adopted by the board as the framework uh, for your evaluation. We, that it was kind of after, I think it took about ninety minutes to get there, um, to that decision, to that realization um, that the, since that was the language used in your criteria, that that would be the best and most fair metric, um, to use, um, for that. That after this evaluation, we may wanna have a discussion of based on how this works out and your feedback, but talking with us and how we look at this, how we would you know, are there things we would want to revise? But like, do that revision immediately after this? So you would have an idea going into the, the year following this, how we're gonna look at your success. Um.
So can I ask, well, that's what I'm still here, the hope is, if, if I remember correctly from our meeting, was that the version of this is also one
She needs it, sort of.
Right, but this is the, this is the P D L, all this sort of, I think, right? But, um but you, I think, would need a different version.
I think, I mean, it could be slightly, I mean, I think, I think that first one, I think is why we were, the conversation that I recall to us we would want Josh to let me to provide a narrative of what her vision of leadership is and her vision for leading the library forward. Um, and we can come up with a more specific phrasing of that if we want, but that was my recollection of kind of the gist of the prompt for her for that first, um, instead of this first box being that would be the prompt for her and that, and she can make that as long as she wants.
Uh, right, but like, I mean, to be, you know, to be fair, it should say, or obviously should say evaluate yourself.
Yes, I like, it's, I guess, yes, the, the, the tenants and director, that could be
What that
Or what, but yeah, that's what I was, I was like, I was going to go smart and
But, no.
That's
But I, 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 I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get around to that, but because when, when we had the hard copy of our notes, we were hoping that we have to then would have this, we should have this, we need to So if you don't mind, I, I'm here, I'll take it, I'll give you a couple of, um, I'll give you a couple of days, even just to change the, like, language you mentioned, that it reflects you, but this will be
The just
Up to the discussion today, right? Like, or any changes that we talk about, that will be the, the just.
Yeah, and I, and I will say, and I will just kick out, saying, look, if you're this, I am comfortable with this, with this document.
Yes.
And I, I, I acknowledge that some things don't fit for reading perfectly, but I am one of seven. And I know, and I accept that I'm not gonna get everything I wanted this and, and make everybody happy at the same time. So it's like, I, I, I'm ready for that, but it's like, I'm comfortable with this document being used this, for this, for this evaluation.
I feel like this is a very accurate reflection of what we put out as the, the job description, which is what we all decided was the best way to evaluate, ask, ask about the things we initially asked
Yeah.
for it to come and do, so I, I agree with that, I think this is
Okay, well, I, I'm a little worried because I didn't, I didn't, there were quite a few sections which I just like logged off and died a little points because it did seem to me that the word, how the way
To, to
Of everyone.
And I will say this, like, when I do this, I'm holding up against the governor, I think, I, I looked at this
It's the same document, you have the document that you said last week?
Yeah, I would say like, I looked at this document as it was, and like, and, and in that frame
Okay.
Of how, how to approach this evaluation, and I was comfortable using this document as it is currently existing.
Thank you. What is, can I move the law? I mean, I would have to do, I mean, myself, but, um but I, one thing that is significantly different is the, is obviously the bottom page, which is where I'm asking the board to take the categories that we just gone through and rank them according to what we think is most important in a leader generally. Because not all, one of the things that I, I noted was that we weren't necessarily pretty women, but in a, in a good, in a friendly way, I think, of what we thought was the most important quality. And especially if we wanted to give just the ability to disagree with that, you know, like that ordering or something and say that you know, that she got something, so, so it looks like seven, but in the actual survey, you're able to rank them according to what we think is most important. And then the last question is to identify like Johnson's particular stress to see how those map onto each other.
That was a response to us having the idea that different things were weighted differently and the overlapping between
Yeah.
Does this go on leadership or does it go on communication? It's communicating about
Yeah, right.
That gives me the side of the front. What you, you think is important, I mean, how you weigh this, so.
Yeah.
That's it, that's all.
And there was deliberately a lot of text space left because we knew there was a lot of overlap, but we know that we don't know what we don't know. And so, so we, we wanna make sure that we leave space for things that we don't know about that I need to have our attention called to, in that we're gonna get it.
Is there, is there, I think, an agree, is there a consensus? And I know we are, you know, three and a half hours in to this tonight, and I know we're private, but I, I don't want this to drag on, you know, and for, you know, additional time, because it's gonna take us gonna take us some time to complete this ourselves, it's gonna take time for Josh to do it, and even a special meeting will, will take time and, and slide around if, if we are comfortable and accept that this can that this is not gonna make all seven people perfectly happy.
Thank you. Uh, can I, I know you're wrapping up, so trying to be, I don't know. Can I, uh, can I say a quick thing that the other thing that I did, I don't, I mean, uh, it was that I um, intentionally took away the whole stress and weakness except for that last question, where I can only have friends. I don't, I think that that itself, I mean, like, I don't think we need to put particularly weakness specifically, you know, I think that that's
That, that, that can come from our discussion
Right.
And after, after completion.
And, and I, and I wanted to know too, because I, I believe this was what we intended was that when we say, what do you encourage the executive director to do this coming year, that again, how I I was not, I, I hope I was right in understanding that are, are anything that is not possible saying and Josh and I want to find out for ourselves, the document here should be non-valued, so should we like, you did this wrong, do this now, but like you did the dynamic like that, so it's kind of, yeah, or
Not human in conversation or I live or what we think the next steps are, or stop with the strengths or what we see.
Yeah, correct, just like not, not, uh, not valued, I guess. I don't know.
No, I think, I think it's, well, I think, I think this is a, a much, much better document than I think we could have edited the old one into.
Oh, yeah.
I think, I think just from
Yes, yes, that because of the excellent satisfactory need to prove, I don't know, little the, the categories, right, that you were saying from the the, the
Yeah, that's what, that's what I, that is what I think.
So can, can I get a sense of the timeline?
Well, if we are, uh, it already is comfortable with this document, uh, released for the cycle, I mean, where I think we could still, like, you know, once we work with it and completed, I'm sure we've all had thoughts, and we can revisit it over summer. But I think right now, um But I think right now, um. Can send out the link for us to complete it.
Yeah.
Um, and you can get, and Jocelyn will have this hard copy, so she can always start looking at. The co- the content of it, and if you want to revise the, you know, the executive record part two, they have a descriptive engagement. And then add the prompt for her to describe her sense of leadership, um, and general vision, um. Um, you can send that question maybe to the board, and we can individually respond with feedback in that specific part.
Okay, uh, I was just going to change the pronouns for that portion on.
Sure.
For the general leadership, which is.
You're welcome.
Is that, is that okay, like, is that what you're talking about, right?
Yeah, same question, just.
Yeah, and then.
Just recorded with different pronouns.
Yeah, and then, um, that can be sent to Jocelyn to complete, and then we can. All complete this and have close session discussion of the results next month. That's something everyone completes it on time, and in time for a compilation to be ready now.
Okay, so, um, Jocelyn, would you like, would you let me just send you a separate link, so you can fill this out in a timely, what would you, what is your word?
Well, I, I have some questions.
Yeah.
I want your questions just overall, before we go too far. So I understand the expectations, um, thank you, um, so. They're gonna give me a version of this, but I feel I was trying to answer on this part. So that's the self-evaluation, um, based on each of these.
Uh, so, okay, so the hope is that there's a longer target from you about just our general leadership, right, because. We don't want to be, on my understanding, and you all would correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding from the last conversation was that we don't wanna be too prescriptive. About all the definition of a good leader is, you know, so we want that to be your space where you tell. Where you tell us, you start the whole thing by telling us, like, providing a, a summation of, like, what you think is your age for, how, how my leaders are.
I kind of like defining how you do, how you understand.
Lead American leadership and good leadership, I think.
We didn't wanna give a definition for leadership, and then, again, we don't know what we don't know, and launch you into. We're only talking about one specific thread. When we can give you a narrative space, or you can point out the things that are part of your leadership, that are the most important to you, or that you think have been the most instrumental.
So the, so the rest of, that's, so the rest of the sections don't actually have that first box, right, you would do a text thing, right? They only have, you, like, the selection of the bubbles. And then, like, a place to expand our comments, and a, a place to think about. Future, so the hope is that by the time you reach each one of the separate prompts, each, any one of us. Reads each one of the separate prompts, by the time we get to the questions, we have a sense of, like, that category that, that.
So I'm not, self-evaluation of the questions.
You are.
I am.
The whole, whole thing, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's based off of the document description.
So mine would, mine would be different in that I put the description parts, or do I do the bubbles too?
You do the bubbles.
Oh, okay, thanks, yeah. Um, and then I just, the, the first part of the self-evaluation is, is, is a little nebulous for me, like, it feels. I don't know, it feels not, I don't know, I, I guess it wasn't what I expected in terms of. When I think of a self-evaluation, um, so I just, I, I feel, I don't know, I feel like. I'm not prepared to give you what you want, and I'm feeling like uncomfortable about that, um, right?
So, you mean the first part, that you're gonna be the first question, or we just started, well, our conversation, okay.
I mean, it was definitely nebulous, but that was meant to be. To your advantage, we were trying to leave things open.
Use the.
For you to present what was most important from your perspective, so you're, I don't think you're misinterpreting the fact that it's vague. It is deliberately vague, but that's not.
I imagine, that's, I think part of the conversation that led into that, was that our. Our bringing of preference for your leadership is what happens at these meetings. And I think what, I think what folks wanted to hear was a little bit more about. How your leadership may manifest. When we're not in this room together.
Thank you, that gives us some context.
Is that, is that sound, like, like it's in summer, yeah, okay.
Yes, the, the reason why we wanted to have that, that we did, was to allow you to describe in your own words. What it is that you're bringing as a leader to this wonderful institution, right, and it's. It's not just about you presenting your report on a monthly basis, it's about, you know, growth opportunities. That you might be offering the staff, and the same thing, or, or if, like, mentorship that you're offering younger, you know, there are different pieces. That the job description put out there, that you can explain how you have put that into action. And why you're evaluating yourself in the way that we are, but also gives you a little bit of extra time, a little extra space to be like. Hey, I'm saying that I'm, I, I, I'm excellent here because of blah blah blah, and. I'm not really sure about this piece because it's just been a year, and, you know, it allows a little bit of that.
Not doing the race.
Would Jocelyn be able to, I don't know what the format is, would she be able to do like the other pieces and sort of see. The questions that are here and then go back to that question for that.
So, yeah, so I mean, the absolute, what I can do is. Uh, I had the same thought, it's, it's funny, as, as Maja was speaking, I was realizing that maybe, like, once you. Looked at what the many prompts are or the other things, you will have a much better sense of what we're not asking you about, you know, like, and I. And I think that that might be.
That helps.
Right, so, yeah, I think it is, the question was usually.
And I, and I, if we had anything more, uh, probably saying, I liked that it was upfront. Because then it's not like a. You have a lot of else extra, it's actually like foregrounding.
Right.
Yeah, and then visuals, perception, and the other, yeah, that, it's not like prescribing it, so you have.
But, but if you want, uh, on your version, I can move that to, to the end of it, it's really.
You all gave me clarity, like, it, it, it sounds, and so I, I almost felt like. Like interview zone, like, you know.
Okay. I, I got that, I know, I, I can repeat that, there's really some other things, I see how it fits, yeah, I see, I see.
I don't wanna give you a, like, a general thing, because there's specific things I can point to.
I, I, I.
Yeah, I had, I, that is something that.
Thank you for, yeah, 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 totally.
That's, that's, that's great feedback, so thank, and that is my feature is world peace for everyone.
That's not responsible.
You know, I forgot, the one point about world peace, I think, so, it's like, maybe that it was like that in the job description.
Yeah, like, I'm only had much more clear parts than I did, and that's why we kind of left it that way.
No, that is, thank you for allowing the question and the clarity, because now I understand where you're coming from, and that'll help me write. And we don't have a miss, uh, again, I almost thought, you know, again, I believe, you know, the children of the future, let them lead the way, that's not.
I think it's just for the visiting first, I guess, when I first saw, I haven't been good at what you're waiting, no, you shouldn't go ask.
Right, no.
So I think it was the value of that.
Close to your point, what happens is you just kind of do a doc, and then you're just trying to cram it in there.
Yeah, you did, you go into one of the other boxes. Okay, and then it just happens kind of random instead of a, like, hey, let me tell you.
So the, the process for us is going to be, we're going to fill this, sort of, yeah. Online, right, and then we're going to deal with the collective thing as a combination for our conversation, putting in our. It's, it's true.
You, I don't wear the phone, you don't, you, I have a really pretty.
I agree, that's not actually all, it's, uh, the file, I mean, it was me, but like. But what I, but, uh, my question to you, Jocelyn, is what format you would prefer. This to be in, because we are going to be in different places, we need to submit it remotely, we're going to have a conversation, that's not at all your context. For this, does that make sense, so, I could literally just send you a PDF of this and.
Well, you don't have to read it, so how would it be, like, if I'm giving it back to you, what's easiest for you all? Do you wanna Google Doc, do you want me to just put it in email, do you want a Word doc, how do you want me to respond?
Not that we just talk, maybe, yeah, but. That's.
Well, there, I believe my own leader, I will.
Literally, um.
I can do a version, I can do a version of the online thing.
Okay.
You know, and you'll have this.
Okay.
So you're not, you're not seeing the questions for the first time, and that on Instagram, yeah.
So you want me to put it in here, like, full?
Yeah, and then we'll just have those.
There, there will.
Then it's fine, you just expand the middle a little bit, ready? Yeah, yes, moving. Um, so, so then. So can I ask, I feel like obviously we need to all go home, but like, uh, can. I, I am happy to wait until like Friday, if you wanted to take more out of it. So then, I, I don't really, right, but I can, I can say that, so my question is, when do we close? How long do you need to put the, like, a week?
So the month, the one day before, uh, let's have it, uh, Friday, to make sure everybody has it on the, um, oh, eight days before or less would be.
I feel like, I feel like you should make it more like ten to four days, so.
On day to day, yeah.
Ten days, ten days.
Yeah. The, the, you know.
There will be, we need to be our names, there will be, we need to be.
I think that, I'll see.
And I see helpful, I mean, I don't mind, I figure we're not good, I don't care, if you're not, if you're not, uh, kind of, uh.
If there's like, like, here's a field that you put initials, oh, like, or something, where you can, who put it in this one, you can see.
You know, we can have that, it's pretty, like, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Every, every surveys, who, who was like, we saw that.
Thank you, that was great, so, so our deadline is March nine, that's not Jocelyn's date, though, right? We do in March.
Yeah, I've already.
Yeah.
Yeah, our, our, the board deadline to complete is, is February.
And, and how does the board with, and, and reminding again, uh, when we have a closed session, we also have Jocelyn's room, right?
So she didn't have it, did it, or, or, until.
I was gonna say, we just need that.
We, we just see a.
So we gotta watch the video of Jocelyn tomorrow week, so that's February sixteenth, is Jocelyn's deadline, that'll give you, I mean, can we give her a call date?
Being honest, it's, she, she is, well, you'll be, you'll be, you'll need to proof set for us, so we have to say.
Yeah.
And we're gonna be, we're gonna run it for.
Well, it should, it should be, we, it should be, like, out of our copy that we had at the meeting, I don't want, I, I'm not wild about that, so getting emails, uh.
I'll put it out, so you can leave it in our house with some goodies, and you can each come out.
Okay.
And I'm only all good.
Let's, let's proceed with that then, um.
And so when I get it, your, you all's end of it, is it seven different, or is it?
Well, accumulation, that'll be accumulation, because what we will discuss, and then, um, I mean, I mean, and what we have done in the past, and. Is that we don't even, in the past, we have not presented the director with the full text of the report. We, the board will sit with that over to the things that we feel is kind of relevant to our discussion with you. And then we will discuss with, and then sometimes it has been the board or the director, or just. The four presidents and another trustee, even since then, with the director, and goes over the results a- afterwards.
I'm sorry, I, this was instinctively, I would go, and all of mine.
Okay.
Our meeting is twenty-seven, right? I thought it was three, no, I'm.
Their order, their order is. Yeah.
Okay, so, so we have the very interesting, and then Jocelyn will have the very kinder.
Yeah, I'll do it, we'll tag that one.
So maybe, um, I will, I will be telling you in the first second, then, we'll be. Oh, we have this.
No, no, okay, let's, let's leave it for, you know, it's, it's.
Sixteen.
Uh, sixteen, sixteen, or early?
Yes.
Okay, but I need to push it that the other side of the library comes, yeah, you know.
If you just, yeah, we can.
No.
Oh, let's go, keep it, that'll stay, yeah, okay, it's all me too, so it's.
Okay, so I'll send it out in the next couple of days.
And with, and with that, is there a motion to go with just very short, close questions?
So, so moved.
I mean, I forgot.
I'm alarmed, yeah.
Our, it's very convincing, our role call, we are making the vote.
Boss is here.
And you can probably, uh, sign off, yes. Alright, so, please excuse us.